Okay, so welcome to our panel on preventing harm to clients and proactive regulation-based management. As you listen to our speakers, I'd like you to keep in mind the overarching question of whether and to what extent the State Bar should take on the role of risk prevention. We spent a lot of time talking about discipline, and so this is sort of on the front end of things. What should we be doing to prevent these things from happening in the first place? So I'm excited to welcome to the panel Margaret Brown-Funck, who is the Chief Deputy Regulation Counsel of Colorado's Office of Attorney Regulation Council, which is the division of the Colorado Supreme Court that regulates attorneys. They are the equivalent of the State Bar and in fact do even more than we do here in California. So among her many responsibilities, Margaret runs the Office of Attorney Regulation Council Trust Account School. She serves on the Colorado Supreme Court's Advisory Subcommittee on Proactive Management-Based Regulation, and she'll tell us about Colorado's new Lawyer Self-Assessment Program, which allows lawyers to reflect on their strengths and weaknesses with respect to client service, law office management, and compliance with their professional obligations. And by doing so, it's intended to prevent problems before they arise. Now Margaret's can be followed by Steve Moadd, who really doesn't need an introduction, but he'll share with us his thoughts on what the State Bar could be doing with respect to prevention, particularly with respect to small and solo practices. After that, Sean will introduce the remaining two speakers.
Good morning. Good morning. Oh, now I really exist. Everyone can hear me. Thank you for the invitation. Love to travel and talk about our self-assessment forum. We put a lot of work into it, a lot of resources, and we're a big fan of helping lawyers avoid discipline. We have 40,000 lawyers in our state, 25,000 of which are active, 11,000 of those are solos or small firms. Our office, we do everything. We do admissions, CLE, annual registration, lawyer discipline, lawyer disability, we prosecute UPL. We also serve the Board of the Client Protection Fund and do their investigations, and then we do receiverships. We call them in the right counsel cases when lawyers die or become disabled. So we're a cradle-to-grave outfit in Colorado, and what we learned from all of those experiences is that most lawyers who get agreements, get agreements because they're lacking sufficient training or knowledge in a particular area, or they've let their business practices run amok, because we're not trained to be business people in law school. It's not intuitive for many of us. So we're really excited about the self-assessment form and process, because we don't enjoy disciplining good lawyers who make mistakes that can be avoided through education. So announcing prevention is worth a pound of pure. That's the mantra for proactive management-based regulation, which is what Colorado is moving to. Our office was originally called the Office of Disciplinary Counsel. Now we're the Office of Attorney Regulation Council. We changed our name specifically because we're more than prosecutors of lawyers. That's a very narrow view that we've moved away from. We're even looking to change our name again, because we're now looking at regulating non-lawyers who are engaged in the practice of law by triple OTs. So why did we come up with the self-assessment forum? Well, it's consistent with the mission of our office, which again, we don't see ourselves as strictly prosecutors. We're lawyers that make mistakes, and we don't want to meet out punishment. We want to help lawyers be successful to protect the public interest, which is different than just protecting clients. We've also moved away from that statement. We believe that the goal of our office is to protect the public interest, which includes lawyers, helping lawyers succeed in a very difficult market, helping lawyers recapture part of the legal market that we've lost. You know, studies show that we have now 30% of the legal market, 70% of the legal market is going to individuals or companies or software programs that aren't lawyers. So that's consistent with our approach. We now have evidence from other jurisdictions that proactive practices reduce complaints against lawyers. Yay! And it's a complement to what our Colorado Supreme Court has set out in its preamble of regulatory objectives. So the highlights of those objectives that relate to the self-assessment forum, the court has tasked us as lawyer regulators to enhance client protection with proactive programs, hence the self-assessment forum. We're also tasked with assisting providers of legal services in maintaining professional competence and professionalism, again, through proactive systems. And we're tasked with helping lawyers through different stages of their career. This is a really broad mission statement for what is seen in other states as just a disciplinary office, but we're a voluntary bar, and our bar membership is decreasing year after year after year. The bar association in our state is not able to provide all of these services, and we are in a unique position to be able to help, because we know what the problems are, we can identify them, we can use the data, from who has trouble getting admitted and gets admitted, to whether they get disciplined, to who becomes disabled, what happens at the end of the life cycle of that lawyer. So we're also tasked with promoting diversity, inclusion, and equality. So part of our self-assessment forum is, there is a diversity section to remind lawyers, that's something we should be thinking about, and protecting client information. So other jurisdictions around the world have started this proactive movement long before us, and so they've given us some good data. In New South Wales, the law firms that go through the self-assessment forum that is offered in New South Wales have had 2/3 reduction in complaints by clients, which is amazing. So how did we start building our self-assessment forum? Well, we put together a subcommittee, we invited 15 lawyers from around the state with all kinds of different practice areas. We also always invite non-lawyers to our committees. So we have CPAs, we have members of now practice insurance organizations. We had someone from the Better Business Bureau come and help us talk about how can we develop a self-assessment program that'll help lawyers. So we got together as a committee, we started drafting the preamble for our Supreme Court. Our Supreme Court adopted that preamble in April 2016. We then sat down in little small groups and said, what do lawyers need to know the most about conflicts in a 10- to 15-minute chunk? So we were thinking, you know, it's going to take about 100 minutes to get through all 10 topics. We want them each to be 10 to 15 minutes. Lawyers can do them in individual chunks, they can sit down for the whole 100 minutes, they get three ceiling credits for doing it. So we had lawyers in our office on all of the committees, you know, helping come up with resources, and we track complaints, and so we're able to identify, what are the most complaints we get in the area of communications? What complaints do we get for fees? What complaints do we get related to communication? And then we tailored our self-assessment 10-minute chunk to the problems that we can identify as regulators, because we track the nature of the complaints that come in. So we developed an online program, we did some focus groups, I guess it's called beta testing, I'm not very savvy technically, so I'm not sure about that. And then we launched, we went online in October. Our subcommittee, again, 15 practicing lawyers, other people from outside of the legal profession, looking primarily at efficient office manager, delivery of high-quality client services, and compliance with regulations. I don't know about you, but we have members in our bar that are very suspicious of Regulation Council. I think we're out to get them. Some of them even think we tap their phones or have a camera in their office. Yeah. So for that segment of the bar, and there were some of those points of view on our 50-member subcommittee, we thought very carefully about confidentiality. So we purposely picked a software company outside of the United States, and they would be hard to serve. It's funny, but it's true. We have very clever people on our 15-member committee. I didn't come up with that idea, it was a practicing lawyer came up with that idea, and it was bloody brilliant. So we have this company in Vancouver that manages the data. That company is committed by contract not to ever give us individual responses to the survey. All we get is an office that are aggregates, so that we can track trends, we can see what questions everyone is getting, everyone gets right, which ones do everyone get wrong. We teach hundreds of CLEs across the state, we do it at our expense, because again, our mission is to help lawyers avoid getting in trouble. That's not the best way for us to protect the public. So we are looking at these trends to modify our new school for new lawyers, our ethics school, which lawyers get an invitation, can't come without an invitation, because we had some problems, and our trust account school. So that's what we're hoping to do with the data that we collect. Also, we want to see our solos struggling in a particular area. We're going to talk a little later, but because we control attorney registration, we have lawyers identify what type of practice they have, and we carry that over to the self-assessment so that we can track what answers our medium-sized firms lawyers are getting wrong or need help with, what answers our solos are getting wrong and need help with, so we can target different audiences. Also, we are in the process of drafting a court rule that will make the answers that a lawyer provides through the software to be privileged, kind of like a doctor peer review rule. So we're looking for a court rule, we're also talking to the legislature about a statute for privilege related to these responses. Our ultimate goal is to have lawyers get together and have a conversation about their results, and so we want to protect those conversations. So that's still on our to-do list. Here's the website where you can find our online platform. For lawyers that really don't believe that their information in Vancouver is, you know, outside of the jurisdiction, not subject to subpoena, you can actually print and do a hard copy survey, so you don't even have to do it online if you really are concerned about your privacy. And again, we give 3CLE credits for this. And in Colorado, you have to get 45 every three years, so that's a nice little chunk, because there are also ethics credits. We went live on the 23rd, we've had over 100 people complete the survey. 228 have completed at least part of the survey, 93 have completed all 10 sections, but we've had 1,300 total sections completed, which for us is a big accomplishment in two months, especially because one of those months was the holiday season. So who's using our platform? Almost half of the users are solos and small firms, and that's our primary target. Most complaints in our state are against solos and small firms. But we also have some medium firm users, large firm users, in-house counsel, government practitioners. It's probably a lot of people in my office. But it's very early in the data collection, so who's using the program in regard to years of practice? Look at 2/3 are lawyers between 1 and 20 years. And we know in our state that the most dangerous time for our lawyers is between 10 and 15 years. That's when the lawyer is most likely to get grieved for serious misconduct, for lots of reasons we won't talk about today, but we're happy to see that chunk of the population using our new tool. We're also able to track traffic. Our compliance period ends for all lawyers on December 31st. No surprise, we had a big jump at the end of December to get those 3 CLE credits. And where are the users located in our state? That's also very nice. Like your state, we have metropolitan areas where most lawyers practice. We have a county in our state where there's one lawyer for 200 miles. Have to travel 200 miles and there's only one lawyer that you'll reach. So we're always trying to figure out how do we reach out to lawyers in our rural areas, how do we support them, how do we come up with tools to help them so they don't have to travel to Denver to do all of their CLE? And the self-assessment tool is a good tool for them, so they can stay at home. What does our survey and the self-assessment look like? Well, we have 10 sections, this is just because the print is so small, only four, but we really thought through, what are the, how would we break up, you know, all of the topics that make a lawyer competent and able to perform loyal and provide substantive service? So we have areas such as communication, fee agreements, client confidentiality, trust account, these are just four. What is the whole point? Well, we want lawyers to test themselves, get feedback about how they did, and be able to return to the self-assessment forum in the future and see if they do better. And also, the questions will be mixed up, and so there's an ongoing process of refinement. Lawyers can get these CLE credits every two years, so we're hoping that we're going to continue to refine the questions, and they're going to continue to return, and they're going to continue to grow as a lawyer, to provide better services. So what does the online report do? Well, you go through and answer, did anybody take the online self-assessment? Yay! It is so much fun. Calendar in for lunch on Monday, in one section. You go through and you answer a number of questions under a particular learning objective, like how do you ensure that your staff keeps client information confidential? That's the learning objective, and then you answer questions about that learning objective, and then you get a report about how you did. And in the report, we have spent a lot of time providing links to law review articles, links to the Colorado Bars publication for related articles. We also have links to the rules of professional conduct. So the lawyer gets instant feedback about whether they answered the question correctly or could have answered it better, and then they get educational links right there. They just click and they can read about that particular topic that they're deficient in. So we surveyed our users and asked, you know, what were your objectives in doing the self-assessment? And the highest, those that came in highest were, they wanted to learn how to communicate respectfully with their clients, they wanted to ensure that their trust account was being handled correctly. Areas that they've identified as areas for improvement include regularly assessing client satisfaction. Lawyers are always surprised when they go through our survey that part of it is, are you providing, you know, good services that your clients are going to refer new clients to you? That's something that we forget about often. And promoting diversity and inclusiveness are areas that most lawyers identify as needing individual improvement in. So the feedback, lawyers, most of us, certain personalities. We like our gold stars. They want more gold stars. Seriously, they want more gold stars. They want to be rated from 1 to 5 and little stars show up, where they get their answers right. So that's something we're taking into consideration and may be doing. We got a lot of feedback from lawyers in particular practice areas that I don't really need to talk about, I don't want to go through the trust account section if I'm a government lawyer, I don't have a trust account. So we're going to continuously refine and possibly have different tracks for different types of lawyers, but I'll tell you, we have a big fight inside the office about that, because lawyers who get into the most trouble regarding fees and fee agreements and money, which is serious discipline in our state if you mismanage client money, are lawyers who leave government practice and go out on their own and have no idea what to do with a trust account. So that's still up for debate, I'll keep you posted. Other feedback, they appreciate the opportunity to be able to click right on links that are going to give them the answer and educate them about why they may have a misperception regarding their particular duty to a client, to the court, or private conduct. One survey participant said, "Made me think about how I can better communicate with a client." And others said they appreciate the forms from ALPS. ALPS is our main legal malpractice provider. So we reached out to the community, not only did we look at publications and other training materials generated within our office, but we reached out to the insurance providers and said, "Can you help us with forms? Can you help us with sample fee agreements?" So it's been a real collaboration. And IT questions, we have a number of IT questions that lawyers never thought about, and they really appreciated that the survey pointed out some obligations there that they might be overlooking. So looking ahead for us into 2018, we're going to keep arguing about that law practice review track. We're going to modify and reform our platform, and we're going to continue to promote it. Our 50 members on our committee are generally members of specialty bars and local bars, and we've pulled them from all over the state, and so they're now our ambassadors, and they're out giving CLEs about our program. And we created the CLE PowerPoints for them, so we deliver a package to them, and they are able to deliver it to an audience with very little preparation. And we're going to get that proposed rule of amendment forward for privilege to help shore up the protection of the answers and encourage peer review. And I'm sorry, I have a couple minutes over, but that's much for you.
Thank you.
So you're actually right in time for our panel, so we're going to, we start at the clock at 9:05, if that's going to be action.
I always go, I always go over, so yay!
Thank you all for being here and for allowing us to present, and I also want to thank Margaret, in particular, for being here and traveling all this way to come out to the next one. I guess my portion is to talk about what we are considering or looking at doing in the area of...
I think everyone has this.
Oh, these are the extras then. Okay, great. There's two packets for this panel, so the second, smaller one, is the one that I'll be addressing. And so the preventing harm to clients and the proactive regulation, the handouts that are associated with this also come from Colorado, and from Margaret. Paul Burgoyne is the Deputy Chief Disciplinary Counsel of Pennsylvania. He's somewhat famous within the National Organization of Bar Counsel for saying that he's gone through his entire 30-year career and never had an original idea. I'm not ready to adopt that mantra, but I also do not believe in reinventing the wheel, and I believe that what Colorado has done is, along with some of the work done by Illinois and some other states in this area, is really commendable. And from my time as a criminal prosecutor, and in my time at the bar, my short period with the bar, I recognize that it is not only cheaper, but more advantageous to victims to prevent misconduct and crimes before they occur, rather than really punish it after it occurs. Of course, there are claims that solo and small practitioners have disproportionate representation in our discipline system, and there may be valid explanations for this. Regardless, we are looking at ways to reach these lawyers to prevent that misconduct before it occurs. As Margaret said this morning, the mismanagement of client money most frequently happens when, the example was government lawyers, but essentially when people leave one area of practice where they don't have a need for that skill, and then go into an area where they do have the need for that skill. And therefore, we want to, as Colorado is doing, monitor practice type and practice size, and put on the website, when somebody goes in within 30 days of changing their address, to go in and update that address, to put that information into the bar website so that we can monitor that. We can then reach out to them proactively, send them a list of, send them a letters containing a list of, here are the top X number of things that people in your practice area get into trouble for, and here are some resources and some informations that you can have to avoid getting into trouble in this area. It would, or it could also contain a link to the self-assessment exercise that, not to Colorado's, but that we could develop to then create that feedback that Margaret was talking about in order to help avoid that area of misconduct. It also could conceivably feed back onto the new attorney CLE, because a lot of those areas would have very fertile ground for people in that situation anyway. So that is essentially it. The handouts are examples of the letters and emails that go out from Colorado, as well as the web interface that allows the attorneys to update their information. This is something that I have explored with our new Attorney Regulation and Consumer Resources Department, unit, office, document. And also with IT, and there's a number of changes that need to occur before that can be put into place or instituted, but that's something that I am hoping to get into the pipeline.
All right, well, please, we're going to have my next speaker now, and please welcome Kim Spirro, who is Vice President of Loss Prevention and Claims at Lawyers Mutual Insurance Company. Lawyers Mutual insures about 11,000 lawyers a year, most of whom are solos or in firms of five or fewer lawyers. Kim has been head of Legal Malpractice Claims at Lawyers Mutual since 1996, and has been in charge of loss prevention for the past eight years. So she is going to talk about Lawyers Mutual's risk prevention programs so that we can see what we can learn from the private sector.
Thank you for inviting me here, and I wanted to give you a little bit of background about Lawyers Mutual, since the State Bar is responsible for Lawyers Mutual's existence. Lawyers Mutual is celebrating its 40th anniversary this year. And in 1970s, many of you, I know in this room, were not practicing law then, there was a crisis because legal malpractice carriers were pulling out in mass out of the state of California, leaving clients and lawyers adrift without any malpractice insurance. The State Bar, probably at a meeting very much like this, decided, how can we help fix this problem? So some of the seed money that went into starting Lawyers Mutual, along with money from Travelers Insurance Company, who was bailing out of the state of California and leaving this huge vacuum, founded Lawyers Mutual. So we are unique in California, because we only insure California lawyers. As mentioned, we insure about 11,000 lawyers and have since the early 2000s. We've been steady at that number. Most of our insurers are solos, most of our insurers are, if not solos, are in small firms. And we're dedicated as a monoline carrier to preventing loss, just as the State Bar is. I think our missions are very similar. Lawyers Mutual also has dedicated many of its resources since its beginning to having CLE programs. We're a CLE provider, we provide over 15,000 hours of CLE to our insurers. We do that primarily through an online device now. When we started our CLE program before I joined Lawyers Mutual, we did road trips. The Vice President of Loss Prevention went all over the state of California and went to hotels and conference rooms and delivered excellent CLE through that means. As we've mastered technology, we now do it from an online CLE, and this year we added an app so that our insurers can watch CLE on their mobile devices, as well as on their computers at their desk, at their offices, or their homes. We try to add about five or six hours of time every year to our CLE library, which is now over 70 hours. We also have a hotline, a one-on-one hotline, which is dramatically different than the hotline that you folks manage for ethics. Basically, myself and two other lawyers who work in the Loss Prevention and Claims Department, we talk every day to lawyers that we insure who are having small problems, large problems, trying to, sometimes just help them cope with the practice of law, which I think we're uniquely close to how vulnerable lawyers feel in today's practice, particularly at the solo and small firm level. They're overwhelmed. They're overwhelmed by the client's demands, they're overwhelmed by financial issues, they're just generally overwhelmed in their practice, and it's very concerning to have the opportunity to speak to them and help them, that's the good part. If nothing else, manage the risks once they've made the hotline call to us. To the extent that the State Bar would ever have resources sufficient to help broaden their hotline, I think it would be helpful, because we get calls often second to the hotline, the ethics hotline that you provide being called. And there's a frustration that they're not able to get their information as quickly as lawyers. Risk management, loss prevention, get ahead of the curve, be proactive. We counsel on everything from helping clients, helping attorneys withdraw, understanding what is attorney-client privilege, getting through some conflict issues, referring many of the harder questions to the State Bar hotline, because we're not ethicists, we are focused on loss prevention. Bringing in some claims before they're actually even claimed, so that the lawyers have a helping hand to manage through the process of the required disclosures. So our hotline system is relatively fundamental to why we have seen claims frequency reducing year after year after year at Lawyers Mutual. We also have a program for brand-new lawyers. If you're a lawyer out from law school and you want to be a sole practitioner, and you're zero to three years in practice, it's called the Strong Start. And you don't have, you have a black and white version that provided this picture.
Closer to you.
Oh, certainly. You have a black and white version in your materials. So the Strong Start program was started about 15 years ago. I was already at Lawyers Mutual, and I was sort of chupin' to think that we were going to be encouraging and ensuring then lawyers who weren't coming through the traditional mentorship system, whether it be system, whether it be government or private practice that had been placed. When I was certainly a lawyer, working with mature lawyers who were overseeing your work, making sure that you understood what your obligations were, making sure that your... The legal work you were doing was correct. But we were noticing that more and more lawyers, especially when we had the downturn in the economy, were going into sole practice without any of the experience of ever running a law firm, and they were sort of adrift. So the Strong Start program has been in place now for about 15 years, and we have some members... You don't have to age out of Strong Start, so we now have lawyers who've been in this system for many years. We require, as a matter of the contract, that the first year they're with us, they take 12 CLE sessions from our online system. That reduces to eight years their second year, and four years every year after that that they stay with us. So it lets us manage some of the information that they're getting. And I'm happy and astonished to report that our Strong Start insurers actually have a better record than our standard book of business. So I'm not saying it's what they're learning on our website necessarily, but the folks that are leaving law school and are starting their practice at either year zero up to year three are managing pretty well from our point of view. And I think that might be a little surprising to many people in the legal profession. But what I really wanted to talk about today, most importantly, is what I think is our biggest gap in legal education and legal training, and that is understanding high-conflict personalities. If I were to tell you that at least a third of the claims that come in our door are not at all based on any mistakes of the lawyers, other than not understanding the needs and the personality issues of the clients, it's a huge problem. It isn't anything you learn in law school. I was not a psychology major. I was a history major. I don't know how many of you majored in psychology, but if I had, I would have understood this a lot earlier. One of my best, Head of Claims for Lawyers Mutual, I've been to probably thousands of mediations over the years, and I did in private practice before I came to Lawyers Mutual. And at Lawyers Mutual, doing so many mediations, I would sort of knock my head as long, saying, why didn't this case settle? We were offering a very fair amount of money. Opposing counsel seemed to want the case to settle. Why did the client not take this opportunity to end this dispute and take their compensation and leave the system? And then it wasn't an aha moment, because it was a slow burn. And then I started to take training myself and learn about high-conflict personalities. It's a huge issue in litigation, in what we do, because people who have a high-conflict personality are way more likely to have multiple divorces, to have employment litigation, and other types of litigation, and sue their lawyers for their dissatisfaction in the result, which isn't really a result of what the lawyer did or didn't do substantively. It comes down to learning how to manage as best you can, as a non-mental health professional, the issues that these clients present. And they present, in the litigation realm, probably 20% to 25% of the time. And I included some materials. We've partnered with the High Conflict Institute, which is run by a lawyer mediator in San Diego, and he speaks all over the world on this topic. If you don't have the training, you have the client who's been to three other lawyers before they come to your door, and you listen to their issues, and you think, oh, I'm a lawyer who's going to be able to face this situation, even though the other lawyers didn't. I can come in and I can help. The lawyer... I'm not discouraging the lawyer from coming in and helping, but if they don't understand the mental health issues of their clients, they're not... They're going to be the fourth lawyer on the list of the lawyers who do not satisfy the client. We have three hours of training on this topic on our website, including one that's devoted to ethical issues that high-conflict clients pose. But I feel like it's the ultimate gap in the education of lawyers in our state now, because they just don't know how to deal with it. I hear it on the hotline. The information that the lawyer got on the front end of taking in their case for the client does not at all match the reality once they're six months in and they've seen the documents, and they've taken the deposition of the opposing party. And then they want to get out of the case, which isn't always a good thing from a loss prevention point of view. It isn't necessarily the best thing for the client, but the lawyer doesn't have the tools to manage the client. So what tools can we have as lawyers where we don't have years of mental health training to help us work with identifying clients and work with clients who have these problems? Well, the identification isn't really all that hard once you have the training. You start to understand what the tells are. The tells might be that they're endearing themselves to you as the senior partner, that they're trashing your receptionist, your assistant, or the associate, because that is a very typical behavior. Other... The gap in between how they perceive their case and the information you're getting is another red flag. But once you've identified that you have a client who just isn't capable of seeing the world in the same rational way that we've been trained to think of our legal cases in law school or in practice, what do you do? And it's somewhat similar to what I was hearing on both sides. You have to learn how to communicate in a way that is effective and doesn't ratchet up the conflict for the client. And the system has a cute acronym called BIF, Brief, Informative, Factual, and Friendly, because often when clients start to attack us, lawyer training would be to go right back at the client and be harsh and point out their feelings, and that's probably the last thing you want to do. And if you're dealing with a certain type of personality disorder, withdrawing, abandoning, stop answering the calls, stop answering the emails, just ratchets up their distress so much that that is the wrong thing to do. So if lawyers had the training in this area to be able to communicate and manage the clients, it would be a huge, tremendous public service, because this is the, in my mind, the unknown problem that's out there in the loss prevention community is how to manage all these people that are in distress, which was heightened by the economic downturns. A lot of this is environmental, and some of these personalities and situations go back to early childhood and genetics. But in times of heightened issues, including high-conflict situations like divorce and litigation, the clients are all the more... So I would appreciate if this issue, which has become fundamental to my everyday practice, I would sit down with the asset counsel, and they might be reviewing 30 cases that they're handling over, given me my last few hours. And I will be reviewing the cases, and seriously significant number of the issues are not that the lawyer didn't file a case on time. It's not that the lawyer misjudged your conflict. It's that the lawyer wasn't able to identify these mental health issues of the client, and they weren't able to manage their case as best as you can with those circumstances. And they were assuming that they had a client that was capable of being completely truthful and rational, and sadly, there isn't a case for lawyers. So the last topic that I thought I wanted to bring to your attention is the help that lawyers who are solos and in small firms need with the new, engrossing problem of cybersecurity. The legal malpractice community, including Lawyers Mutual, have... They've stepped up to address it, and most legal malpractice carriers in California now have added cyber coverage for lawyers that helps protect them, their clients, and the general public. We, a few years ago, as part of our CLE programs, were always looking to educate our insurers on trends, so we decided to tackle a cybersecurity seminar, so we would understand it better and be able to help them. By the time we were done with our two-hour taping, we were like, we can't air this seminar, because we are going to freak out our insurers and not have a solution to even problem for them, because less personal information has been inadvertently disclosed, whether it's through sending an email to social security members or that there's so many ways a laptop thing stolen or a card that wasn't properly protected. We knew we had to have a solution. So instead of airing our seminar, we went to partner with a company that are cybersecurity specialists, so we now have an endorsement on our policy that we added for free, so that in the event that any of our insurers have what legally is a cybersecurity breach, they're able to call our partner and start the process. And hopefully, before that ever happens, our cyber partner has an incredible amount of information to do risk management ahead of time, so that should a cyber breach occur, everybody on the staff at the firm, and if it's a solo, it might be that one lawyer, that they know who they can call and what they need to do, and what the protocols are, and that they have help for everything from cyber breach and cyber ransom issues. There's an ever-growing number of ways in which cyber thieves can attack practicing lawyers. By upping the awareness and providing this benefit, we feel that we're helping manage an area that, as legal malpractice loss providers, we are not qualified to address, because cybersecurity is heavily regulated and very specific. So I know the bar's done an excellent job of helping lawyers understand some of the scams that have been perpetrated against lawyers and their clients. It's a very large problem in terms of getting the word out so that lawyers know that they have some support in this area, especially the solos and small firms that don't have IT departments to help manage these threats. Well, I'd be happy to stay later to address any other questions you might have, and I appreciate the opportunity, especially you today.
Thank you, Tim. I feel great. Next up is a familiar face, Randy Uyghur, Program Manager for the State Bar Office of Professional Competence. As all of you know, Randy oversees, among other things, the State Bar's at the top line, at the committee on professional responsibility and conduct. Randy's going to talk to us this morning about opportunities to improve knowledge and practices for client trust accounting.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, John. We've got just a few points to cover in the 15 minutes that I have. I'm going to start, and I probably don't have to do this, but I'm going to try to emphasize why I think client trust accounting is behind the list, if there's any discussion about any harm or proactive regulation. The second thing I'm going to do is tell you about some initiatives that are presently in progress, that are aimed at enforcing greater public protection, client protection around client trust accounting. And lastly, I'm going to piggyback to something the board was dealing with a couple of years ago, in terms of client trust account auditing, and the client trust account survey, and some of the possible outreach and other educational initiatives that flow from the information we found through that survey process. So why client trust accounting? Well, as Margaret was saying, it's a matter in the discipline system that gives rise to serious violations. We've got Steve here, I'm sure you can vouch for it, but commingling, disappropriation, those are major disciplinary concerns. They often involve conduct involving more interpretive. When a lawyer fails to completely maintain any records at all, that's gross negligence in the practice of law, very serious. But I'll add some other reasons, too. The lawyers can't hide. The banks who maintain the client trust accounts are required to report to us any transactions that are insufficient funds or zero-balance transactions. And I think almost every year when we file an annual discipline report, when we list the reports that we get from others, the insufficient funds reports are always at the top of that list. Another reason is that client trust accounting violations can be quote-unquote "technical violations." You don't have to have harm to the client to commit a client trust accounting violation. If you have a situation where you've conducted a transaction or a client trust account, you turn for insufficient funds, you say, oops, and you restore the funds to your account, it doesn't help you. The fact that the client receives every penny that they're entitled to, Supreme Court said, does not absolve you of the violation of client trust account problem. Lastly, we have a Client Security Fund in California that is hurting, and trust account violations go directly to the Client Security Fund issued in terms of the money that we have to pay out trying to make clients whole when there has been death of client funds. So again, don't think that it marks by way of persuasion that client trust accounting definitely is something that should be behind the list in terms of preventing harm and proactive regulation. What are some of the things we currently have in progress? As you know, we have submitted to the Supreme Court a set of comprehensive provisions of the rules of professional conduct. In those rules, there are a few key changes with regard to the handling of client funds and property. The current Rule 4100 says the lawyer shall maintain the trust account, all funds held for the benefit of the client. Way back in 1979, in a case called Barron Alce versus the State Bar, the Supreme Court said, "That does not require a lawyer to place advanced fees in the trust accounting." And since that time, there's been attempts to change that. All jurisdictions that follow the model rules require advanced fees to go under client trust accounting. In the rules that the board adopted and submitted to the court last March, we included a change in the law that would require lawyers, the first time in California, to place advanced fees in the trust accounting. We included some other things, too. In the rule governing fees for legal services, we included a provision that says it is not proper for a lawyer to designate a fee agreement as being non-refundable or earned or received. We made an exception for true payment fees, but said you can't do that. Now, the one thing we got back in the public comment from all this is that there are lawyers in criminal offense and bankruptcy who charge flat fees. So the commission, the board adopted provisions that provide an accommodation for flat fees. Flat fees can be subject of an attorney-client fee agreement, and you can collect those as the time your services are completed or advanced, but you have to go through a protocol in terms of getting client consent if you don't place those in the client trust account. All of those are pending with the Supreme Court. We don't know what they're going to do with those. If they do make those changes, it will be a sea change in how client trust accounting is done in California. We had a commission meeting Tuesday, last Tuesday, the court liaison was present, and he did tell us that the rules are being considered in conference, and they're about, he said, 85% of the way down. So I don't know how close that is to completion, but we're near the end of the road of proposed rules, and I'm very curious to see what happens to these enhancements to client trust accounting. The other thing...
Randy, before you move on, if I could just go up for a second. Because of the computer construction noise that we have outside, we're going to ask you all to pull your bikes closer, so the sound can be picked up on the broadcast.
Sure. The other thing that was done with the proposed client trust accounting rule is that for many, many years, by discipline, common law, essentially, the duties to account for funds, to get notice of funds received, and dispersments has been extended to non-clients. So third parties, lien holders, for example, prior attorneys' lien, statutory lien, or medical lien, those are actually all covered by the client trust accounting obligations. But the rule that we have on the books is silent. So the other enhancement that we hope you can improve client public protection is that a comment was added to the rule that makes clear that that is part of the lawyer's obligation. That's the other thing happening in proposed rules. And again, I'm waiting with interest to see if the Supreme Court is going to approve. If they do, again, it's going to be an important change, and I think will add to the public protection, client protection in this area. The other initiative that's pending right now is on the screen, and if you recall and if you've noticed, in the list of initiatives with regard to client trust account surveys since a couple of years ago, that there was a proposal that new attorneys, in their first year of admission, should receive a special CLE requirement of 10 hours of CLE on topics that are important for them as they transition in the practice of law for the first time. And the working group looked at the survey results, said, "We really hope that client trust accounting will be part of that 10-hour new attorney requirement." And I'm grateful that it actually is. So one of the courses of the 10-hour requirement is actually a client trust accounting course. And what you have on the screen, I think this is either alpha or beta. I wanted to give you a link to the actual program, but I was worried it might not work and would look bad, so these are just screenshots. But this is just a teaser and a preview of what's coming. It will launch on February 1st. We hope, cross our fingers. The client trust accounting program... The client trust accounting program is a product of a lot of work I have indebted to Steve because he has shared with us Susan Kagan from the Office of Chief Counsel, who's the instructor for that school, the instructor for Client Trust Accounting School. She put in a lot of time with also Andrew Tuck, who's the staff attorney for the ethics hotline, to develop a client trust accounting one-hour module that covers all of the key things for client trust accounting. We did find out through the survey, and the survey that we did two years ago, it was demographics, whether you're in practice for one year or 10 years, whether you're a solo or a multi-attorney firm, that on the question regarding, "Have you taken an MCL course on trust accounting?", the answer was extremely low. Almost no one takes a course on client trust accounting. So at least with this one, all new admissions will be required to do so. And as you can see, we will cover all of the key topics. It'll be very straightforward. There's no dancing around or creative scenarios, other things. It is going to download to them directly what they need to know about client trust accounting. Record-keeping requirements, which I'll pause here to say that the current rule 4-100 authorized the board to adopt standards for record-keeping. They don't have to go to the court for approval, but they are the standards by which lawyers are assessed as to whether or not they're maintaining the appropriate records. And once the court acts on the new rule, it'll go from 4-100 to 1.15, 1.15 will include that same provision that authorizes this board to adopt record-keeping standards. So upon the approval, I hope, of a new rule 1.15, this board will have the opportunity to revisit the trust account record-keeping standards. They haven't changed since, I think, 1992, and so they are ripe for revisiting. They're very basic. I don't think we're asking you to do transformative change with them, but they are something where it is an opportunity to increase public protection. So when the rule comes back, hopefully, there'll be follow-up in terms of the board looking at new or perhaps slightly revised trust account record-keeping standards. And of course, as any sort of interactive online educational tool, there will be questions and assessments. The designers for our education wanted to have a passing score, but our CLE person on our working group said, "If it's MCLE, you can't require them to pass because then it's a test. It has to be more of a self-assessment-oriented objective." And so there is no passing or failing score when you get through the module. There are questions that will help you understand whether or not you were able to absorb all of the materials. So that's the initiative that we look to see becoming a reality very soon. And it plays very well into the client trust accounting survey initiatives that begin on page four, five, six, seven of the agenda item that's in the materials. And if you look at the agenda item, it does talk about some things that at the time we thought would be, you know, really helpful. For example, one of the initiatives that the working group conceived was the idea that law corporations who apply for certification of a law corporation right now have to sign a certificate saying that the name of the law corporation complies with Rule 1-400, which is the advertising rule that covers all communications including the name of the law firm. Historically, this goes back to an earlier, more restrictive law corporation standard that said the name of law corporation should be limited to only the names of shareholders. That is changed because we didn't know that that was enforceable and became a requirement that the name of a law corporation had to comply with rules. So if you're applying to be a law corporation, you have to certify that you've read 1-400 and that your name complies. The working group said, "Because we think that law corporations, among the super-set population of lawyers, our lawyers will be engaged in private practice, they won't be government lawyers, we bristle up the idea of having a new trust accounting education, but there are people who might be going into private practice, then we ought to have some requirement with regard to the trust accounting standards, that they should understand those." And so at the time, the working groups said they should attest that they've reviewed the board's trust account record-keeping standards, as well as the rule itself, and attest to that before we certify them as a law corporation. You know, my light bulb goes over in my head right now because I'm thinking we will have a wonderful one-hour module starting in February. And perhaps rather than having them simply attest, as they're getting certified as a law corporation, that they've read the trust account standards, maybe everyone who applies to be a law corporation is going to have that privilege, should have to take this course. Query as to whether they have to pay for it, whether it be free because it's part of their certification process, those are questions that we can talk about later. But it does seem to make sense that for that group of practitioners who will be engaged in private practice, that maybe we should require them to have this higher level understanding. The other requirements, some were interesting in terms of Doug feeling well with what Margaret was talking about in terms of self-assessment. There was the idea of taking the survey, which actually was originally built so that it had links to existing resources so that when they see their answer, they could get background information on the topic. Some of the survey topics were overdraft protection on your client trust account, accepting credit cards for your client trust account, those types of things that, you know, really have a lot of baggage with them in terms of what you ought to know. And so there was links to that in the survey, when you took the survey. But one of the recommendations from the working group, when we looked at the survey results, was that we worked so hard on this survey, maybe it can be recast and retooled as a self-assessment test, focused strictly on client trust accounting. And that is something that we still think, I think, can still be valuable. One of the hitches we had with it was that we thought that it ought to be something may inviting and attractive, since trust accounting is such an aversion topic, that it should be offered for CLE credit. But then again, our CLE expert said, "If it truly is just some sort of self-assessment tool, it's not truly education." So could we fix it somehow so that there's a teaching aspect of it and the self-assessment remains intact, so that the folks who volunteer to do it will get credit for it? We have yet to work through that, but I think it can be done. I'll tell you that when we did the original survey, we got over 1,100 people voluntarily did it, and we did have a little bit of bribery. At the end of the survey, you would be rewarded with a perk of a $10 certificate credit to use at the State Bar store for CLE. I don't know if that's the only reason they sent us this survey, but it certainly was something that escaped them in the sense of it. Lastly, survey was really something that was born out of it earlier, I think it was one of the two years ago planning sessions, discussion of the board regarding trust account auditing. In your materials, it's the APA model rule on random trust account auditing is not, by far, is not a majority practice of the jurisdictions out there, but it is something that could be considered. I think at the time, when Jane Kim spoke to the working group, she explained that wasn't sure we had the authority, and even if we did clarify that authority, we didn't know what we should be auditing for. We could audit the numbers, if their ledgers, journals, and reconciliations all line up, but is that really going to be the most helpful random audit of someone's trust account? Shouldn't we be looking at, do we handle advanced fees properly? Do we handle funds in dispute properly? Are they maintaining their right to reporting? And so those are some of the things we found in the trust account survey that could now be turned over to a professional audit person to consider for this board, you know, what a random trust account audit could look like. We now have some baseline information of what should be added in that inquiry.
I just want to say, the agenda item that Randy was referring to that was presented to you in February, July 2016 was included in the summary, and two of those that were sent out to you all last Friday, and I just wanted that agenda item to be added. Can we do some of that copy, so that's one?
So I'm just about at the end of the time, but there is a number of initiatives here. Some of them are easy to do, but we've held off on them because we don't want to waste the bandwidth that the State Bar has on an issue like client trust accounting, on information that might change in the very near future. So if we do get those changes, advanced fees go into trust account, duties to third parties, no non-refundable or earned-on-received fees, we would rather use the bandwidth on outreach and make sure that the members all know about those new C changes in how fees and trust accounting is adopted. So a lot of these initiatives are very much running for pursuing as soon as we hear from the Supreme Court on the new rules. Do you have any questions, Tim?
Does the training module discuss the client trust account implications of taking credit cards?
There is, if you look at the screens, at the very bottom, I know it's hard to see, it says, "Refer to the resources section to view the appendix document." And in the, we don't have the, the user interface is not shown in the screen, but across the top bar, there's a help button, the menu button, and then there's the resources link. And then the resources link are all the really deep information that couldn't be fit into e-learning teaching proper, but we didn't want loss in the process. And so the use of acceptance of credit cards is one of the topics that is mentioned in the course, not taught outright, but is referred into the resources where we have a link to the ethics opinion on the State Bar on acceptance of credit cards.
The reason I mention it is I do training in this area, and the most common questions I get are people just can't believe me when I tell them what's required in the client trust accounting rules if they're taking credit cards. There's a lot of people out there who have to take credit cards in order to function in a small practice and have no idea what the implications are. The other question I have is that, just, this is more a statement, but correct me if I'm wrong, these 1992 guidelines for maintaining documents on your client trust account require you to keep hard copies of canceled checks, and banks don't provide hard copies of canceled checks anymore. So that may just be one reason why a standard set in 1992 really needs revisiting. And then lastly, this might be a question for Steve. My understanding is that when you have a bounced check on a client trust account, the bank informs the bar. What do we do with that information?
We generally, excuse me, we generally go and seek the records, the bank records, for that-
Grab your bounced check?
Over.
Well, because you must get thousands.
I don't know the numbers, but I do believe, yes. We do go get the records for that, look at it to determine whether it is an indication of a larger issue or whether it's something mundane, and then we deal with it appropriately. So, yes, my understanding is that for every referral from the banks, that every reportable action, we will go investigate.
I'm skeptical that you really have the resources to do what you're saying.
I don't disagree if we don't have the resources.
I think I have some information about this one. In terms of the way that the data are managed, these come into inquiry, and they come in as multiples, and there are many, many of them. And at that point, when intake looks at them, they need to decide whether they're going to bundle them. So the way that we count them is that we end up counting them as one after they've come out of inquiry.
You need to get multiple bounced checks on a single client trust account each and one.
It counts as the unit of analysis, kind of is what OCTC looks at. So there may be thousands, but that won't constitute thousands of cases.
I don't know whether you're ready for more questions, but I've got a topic to introduce on this subject later anyway.
Well, let me introduce, just go take a big picture look for a second, and then, and then I think we'll recognize Michael, and then I have some questions to propose to the group.
I have a question, too.
Okay, great. But consistent with the panels yesterday, Donna looked at our goals and objectives to see which ones would line up with this panel, and it turns out, the answer is none, which is a little telling. But with Donna's assistance, I put together kind of an impromptu list of things we already do that we follow the prevention category. First, the new 10-hour MCL that Randy talked about for new attorneys. Second, our MCL program for clients in general. Third, the ethics hotline. Fourth, the educational programs that COPAC puts on, which is part of our limited educational program now after separation of sections, and COPAC campaigns. So there may be other things, but I think one thing for the group to think about is whether we want to update goals and objectives with our existing programs and whether we want to supplement with new things and might consider something that we invite with discussion we can have today. So let me next, recognize Michael.
Yeah, I've been thinking hard about harm prevention and looking for something that we can do that would be meaningful, that also accounts for the fact that we are resource-strapped and management has a lot of other things to do. And my CPA is the leader of a law practice CPA firm in West LA, and he touches a lot of the profession. And he tells me that at the moment, he has been retained by two distinct plaintiff firms that have contingency practices to help them figure out what to do with the seven-figure sum in their client trust account that they don't know what belongs to. Because if you're in contingency practice and you don't have a really thoughtful retainer agreement, you end up with hard questions to answer about who owns what in your relationship with your client when you win a big settlement that comes back with costs and interest and multipliers and the like. And so he believes, and I trust him, that there is really significant problems out there that we're not seeing. So the proposal that I'd like to throw out for us to think about is what if we had a program whereby when we get a bounced check notice from the bank, we just send a notice to the law firm saying, "You are required to self-assess according to some criteria," and send us a form testifying under penalty of perjury that you did, and keep your self-assessment under file? And we'll never ask for it until your next visit to our discipline department. In our next visit to the discipline department, it can be a useful prior. Because I think what that would do is cost us relatively little. You've got to set it up, there's some substantial work to do to set it up, but once we do it, it's just effectively a postcard, and the burden is on the licensee, and there are auditors out there who'd be perfectly happy to sell their services to the bar. And we may end up creating a much deeper understanding of what folks' obligations are in a way that I think would be even for harm prevention, but not really burden our staff. So I don't know the days of today necessarily to unpack that proposal, but I wanted to introduce it because I think it's something we can do that would be helpful and wouldn't be terribly expensive for us to do.
First, I have a question for Kim. From at least from a civil liability standpoint, my understanding is county, local bar, state bar, we've been doing risk prevention for a long time. We could get better, we're doing better. But isn't it true that at least from a civil liability standpoint, the claims against lawyers are way down? So there's some good news.
It is, it's true. I've claimed year after year for many, many years. I think the current rate is considered three claims a year against 100 California lawyers when I started to practice, it was in multiple digits.
So, and that's good news for a couple of reasons, because doesn't it make the market more competitive for legal malpractice, because more carriers are willing to write in California as a result of the low claims?
We think so. Very robust market now. Well, practice insurance is very competitive. There are a lot of carriers writing different programs from giant firms down to firms like the firms that we insure. It's a very healthy market. Claims are down. Lawyers understand their documentation obligations better than they used to. Email has created a lot of help and a few wrinkles in terms of the communications being documented between lawyers and clients. So all in all, I think that California lawyers have made great strides in understanding what their obligations are to clients, software systems for statute mutations or dramatically improved. Everything's having made it better in most areas of practice. Probably the area that I would say is the area most in need of addressing from a trend standpoint, and it's been trending upward for many years, state planning lawyers in California and nationally really are seeing a large number of claims. Once again, often not because of what they've been doing, but because of these high conflict and intra-family issues that are triggering probate, estate litigation in our state as we progress through baby breeder situations with multiple marriages, multiple families, everybody fighting over the same state. So it's, it starts changing because my message is that lawyers are really doing a pretty good job. I can't comment on trust accounting, I don't see very much of that on my footsteps, but there are problems in our society that we are not trying to address that are the problems that people who do family law and do state planning receive every single day. They're not equipped to necessarily handle the emotional issues- They're not equipped to necessarily handle the emotional issues that impact legal issues. So once again, it all ties into these fundamental systemic societal problems that lawyers aren't really trying to address, they're trained to address legal issues.
So while civil liability may be counted, it doesn't seem though that in Steve's shop, we're seeing a huge drop in discipline matters. So that's not, we're not getting there yet, but we still have work to do in getting lawyers to stop going into the discipline system, but the civil liability system, that seems to be up. Which brings me to my last question and point, is I think that we should look at what Margaret talked about and replicate it. I mean, they've invented the wheel, let's.
Let's try it.
At least seriously think about.
We are webbed, guys.
Seriously think about. Well, is it copyrighted? But seriously think about replicating it.
No, seriously, go free. Go free. And Illinois has one also, and one thing you need to consider when we've changed to proactive management-based risk programs, Illinois actually makes it part of regulation. So our self-assessment, totally voluntary, although we will be writing it into as a requirement for diversions to, an alternative to discipline, we'll also be making it a requirement for probation, for state suspensions. It does have a place in regulation, but it's totally voluntary. But in Illinois, you're required to take their self-assessment survey if you don't have malpractice insurance. So they, there's a fork in the road, you don't need to consider which way. Our legal community felt that it was too heavy-handed to be part of regulation. In Illinois, they went the other way, they were able to convince their, their population that it should be a requirement for those that don't have malpractice protection for their clients.
I just wanted to recognize Steve Moad for kind of making us aware of the Colorado Self-Assessment. This came up very in discussions in the 10-hour MCL requirements. And I just recognize a couple of staff members, Randy and I think Justin was in the room here. Just the incredible job they've done on that component of our proactive approach. And then I guess I just have a question for Margaret. So it's my understanding that you have a new attorney-in-see requirement. How long has that been in effect?
Decades. We've done a live professionalism class for all new attorneys to our bar for decades, and we attribute the decrease in grievances against new lawyers largely to that program. Because we can track that after the program really got started, new lawyers were getting grief at a lower rate. And we do things like in Colorado, we make them come to our bar association, since it is a voluntary bar association, I don't fully understand your situation here, but the court wants lawyers to join our voluntary bar association. So although our office puts it on, we share fees with the bar association, and it's in their facility, and they get to see, we only have one office, we're such a small bar, but they get to come, look at the store, look at the other references, at least they've stepped into the bar association as a new lawyer. And then the bar association offers them free membership for a couple of years to try to keep them coming back.
Do you make that program available for attorneys that are outside of that lawyer, I guess, practice area?
It's for all lawyers coming in the state, including lawyers coming in by motion. So we'll have lawyers with 20 or 30 years coming from a receivable jurisdiction that are also attending.
So I just want to pose a question. I mean, it sounds like, you know, based on what Todd said, you know, that folks think risk prevention is a good idea, but I was also struck, as Donna was, that it's not included in our strategic plan as a goal or as an objective. So I think a threshold question is whether we think it should be added and what that should look like. Now, as we, I think we're all saying like, oh, this all sounds like a good idea. I do want to point out though that Leah, I think it was you who raised yesterday in our small group discussion, that there are some potential risks to adding risk prevention, you know, sort of writ large, as, as Stacy knows, as a goal or an objective. So maybe those of you who think there are some risks, we should talk about that.
I have been topping about harm prevention as a goal for the bar for most of my five years as a trustee. And I have had a number of conversations with folks in what Sacramento likes to call the building about this subject, and have gotten no pushback about it. The idea of being smart on crime rather than tough on crime has become standard dogma in most public policy circles around the Western world, so I don't see a problem here. We need to be clear, of course, that we're not becoming a trade association that's trying to protect lawyers from their clients, that's not the objective. The objective is to protect the public in a more thoughtful way, because an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure.
I think that's what I was sort of thinking, I was thinking about the role for our Office of Probation, our LAP, there are many areas at the bar where we could re-envision what we're doing from a prevention perspective and a rehabilitation perspective. The risk is potentially some mission creep, or as Michael indicated, I mean, certainly we heard extensively from the sections pre-separation, that what they were doing was prevention because they're providing education. So I think it will compel us to be quite clear about what the scope of our prevention efforts are and should be. But it's not that I don't think we should do it. I really loathe to add a goal to our strategic plan as simply because it doesn't comport with my sense of, you know, we have an adopted five-year plan, but we can certainly have objectives, and it falls within, I think, Goal Two, which covers our discipline and regulatory functions. And so I personally think that would be really appropriate.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, part of what I was thought in my head about is, it's kind of really looking at what we do and kind of honing in even more better, more closely, being able to communicate what we do and how we do it and why we do it. So some of it might be adding and tweaking, but also some of it might be just being able to really clarify some of that. So wasn't, my nod in my head was more really being able to focus it, not being against something as much as really nailing it down and understanding if there are things that we need to add, being very clear about how that's mission-specific, right? And then also teasing out what those things are that fit in that box, and then again, staying very clear to what our health protection mission is. So I think we're all for it in the sense of staying clear about what our role in our boxes, but I think that it was pretty much kind of agreement in spirit of that enthusiasm in that area.
I understand the concern about not wanting to create much education and leaving that for the sections, but I do think we need to take on the analytical role of identifying where the needs are, because the sections won't necessarily have that data. So when we were talking about being able to delve into more analysis, and maybe we'll be able to do that better with the CMS system, but really delving into, you know, what are the number of complaints, but more specifically, who tends to get those complaints, so that we can target those and maybe inform the sections of where they need to spend more time to education.
I agree that, you know, the sections should continue to do the education, but what we're doing with the 10-hour MCL for new lawyers, I really feel strongly it needs to be rolled out perhaps as a requirement to all lawyers. And I don't know what the cost is going to be, we should put as low as possible. The fact that lawyers run into discipline between a 10 and 20-year period, which greater than any other time, it seems to me we really need to address that. And these programs that we're offering to the new lawyers, it's not something the sections are likely to want to do because they like to focus more on substantive law. And if we can keep the cost as low as possible, and make it required for lawyers every three years to take the same programming. And if, I think we should definitely consider adding something about these high conflict personalities, because it's not just clients, it's a prison counter that you're dealing with, and it causes a lot of burnout in the industry. And I think getting some training would be very helpful in that respect.
Yeah, two thoughts. One is, I do think we need to add an objective, and I think it has two components. One is to review our existing harm prevention efforts to ensure that we are optimizing what we're doing in light of our new vision. And then second is looking forward to say, data by opportunity to begin our resource experience, creating new harm prevention efforts. So it's, again, it's looking back and looking forward, two objectives, and two steps of objectives, I think. I also, my ears perked up when Margaret finally mentioned that they require, maybe it was Kim, folks who don't have insurance, it's Margaret, to take this module. We are about to hear up and outback this meeting, the responsible legislative mandate, and we may want to make sure this idea reaches there in discussions.
So just to build on what all of you have said, and in particular Joanna pointing out that, you know, that education done by the Lawyers Association is really substantive base. And that triggered, I'm thinking of, well, it doesn't go to law practice management, for example, it doesn't go to, you know, client trust accounting. And just taking a look back at the three objectives that Margaret stated for the self-assessment, I feel like that's a good way to carve out the role that the bar should be playing. So those are three things. One, client service, which touches on how do you communicate with your clients effectively. Two, law practice management, which also goes to client trust accounting. And three, compliance with professional obligation. So I think the bar should continue to serve that risk prevention and education function with respect to those three categories.
Hi, Mark. We were just talking about, there is a section, I believe, sole practice management.
So there's two sections, there's a small, small practice section, and there's a law practice and technology management section.
And they're the people who are reviewing it's a law practice manager. And I may be joining that, but don't they deal with some of the sections they talked about?
They do.
And the rest of us flew their presentations at the earliest suggestion.
I mean, part, part of the problem is, nobody is interested in taking the course on, you know, client trust accounting.
I am.
Okay. You don't count. They're trying to cover the cost of their programs, and they have to make their programs particularly interesting, and they're covering issues that are not that interesting. Ethics courses tend to be related to specific types of practices, which is good, but we're in a unique position to roll out educationally to the new rules, you know, as a holistic one. And I'm not sure that those people, while they may be in a position to do it, they're not going to get a lot of people clamoring to take those courses, and that's a problem.
I need a crowd for client trust accounting. If I offer it in a small town, which doesn't have a lot of paying opportunities, I offer it in January.
One kind of boogie, sir. Yeah, I do have to pee, though, it's true.
Actually, I'm astounded that, I've done a little survey in my community, how unknowledgeable most attorneys are about managing trust accounts. I mean, it's concerned me. I've actually thought through the local law association, of bringing someone like Michael and somebody out there to do a presentation, just a small, just to let people know how difficult that is. And I'm sure my colleagues in the world would not like this, but I tend to agree with Joanna, that I think trust account management should be a required MCL course for any practicing attorney, whether it's, you know, one year, or three years, or whatever it is, or certainly beginning of practice. I think it's so important, and I think that so many attorneys don't quite understand their obligations.
What I get, it's lovely, I think, the group is leading this direction, some stat is whether we should use the MCL requirements for ongoing practicing attorneys in a more targeted way, right? So to require every practicing attorney to take a full 10-hour course might be a bit much. You might, you could consider that, you could consider doing that in segments over a period of years. But since we know, for example, that trust account issues are a major and recurring source of discipline, and we know, we're going to double evidence at least, that many lawyers don't know much about trust accounting, I think we should consider, you know, requiring to be to our authority to require and what we should require, the trust account modules specifically in, you know, for every practicing lawyer, except those who took a 10-year MCL in some future MCL cycle, so in a three next three recycle, each attorney has to take these. And there may be other suggestions, you know, thinking through, might be work doing in some similar, targeting problems that we see in this system, and specific education that everyone has to take. So I'm not sure that we should rely on people of problems where it is a road to trust account. I think it is not a sexy subject.
I'd like to make your suggestion, because obviously government lawyers don't possess trust modules. So I think that we could point away the rule that anybody who goes into private practice or in practice where they are obligated to have a trust account, must take this course. But it's frankly, it would build up a lot of resentment for a lot of government lawyers to take a course for, they have absolutely built in.
And you're imposing a cost on that.
Right, of course.
So you've got every district attorney's office, every public defender's office, every county council, I guess, you're changing. Right. Yeah, I don't know if that's true. I'm not sure if that's just our resources, but Steve's suggestion, when they leave those offices and go to private practice, that's the moment to definitely, because they don't know what they're going to do.
I was a deputy DA for four years, then I went into private practice for nine years. Fortunately, I went into practice with somebody who had been practicing for some time, because I wouldn't have had a clue, not because of how to deal with trust account.
Yeah, I had an incident in which I had a guy, an esteemed prosecutor, who did public sector corruption cases for a larger county, go into private practice, and promptly sue a former plaintiff of his firm. Because he didn't know about bounced checking, because he'd never had to do anything. So Steve's insight is important.
My suggestion is that we, if we're minded, create a, an objective here, that it be more along the lines of a study and consideration of some of these issues, because I think while proactive risk management and so forth is squarely within public protection, I think it fits very clearly into our mandate. I, just a couple of discussions we've had here, for instance, the sole and small practitioner section, and what they do and so forth, I can certainly see potential friction points between our efforts to discharge our needs. And by the way, another benefit of that would be as proper spurs of public money by reducing our costs, if we can do that. But we're going to have, I'm concerned, friction with the California Lawyers Association, and we need to think through very carefully how we structure any program that we put in place, and make sure that we are reducing that friction, and we're avoiding it if we can.
It's my understanding you and Brandon are working on the MCL issue generally right now, you know, whether, how we should be changing it, with the recommendation coming back to the programs committee. Perhaps you two could flesh us out a little bit more as far as what steps we should be taking going forward based on things that you're hearing and with the help of staff.
It strikes me that, I mean, to, first of all, to Alan's point, it strikes me that adopting something like the Colorado Self-Assessment Program could serve in a way as that assessment for identifying the areas where, you know, where are people getting the answers wrong? What do people need more education about? Can we divide that up between, you know, as you showed in your graphs, you know, years from practice, what type of practice they have? So that we can then roll out more targeted education and risk prevention. The thing about this solo, you know, the solo practice group and the law practice management groups of the lawyers associations are totally voluntary, and some of these topics really do need to be rolled out to attorneys in all types of practice, including attorneys who have no interest in being part of those groups.
Just to dovetail on that, that's sort of, I think that's our job as the mandatory bar, then to give that data that Steve gets to CLA, that's our role, I think, is not necessarily to do that, not to do their job, we're not a mandatory bar, but to give that data to them, they can use it and create programming, and create educational opportunities in the areas that we told them this is a problem areas.
I wanted to add one thing that is more mundane, that's pretty foundational to our ability to actually piece this out, which might make my very concrete objective, is right now, we don't collect data about attorney's practice types, meaning, are you a solo practitioner, are you in a small firm, or are you in a medium firm? We don't collect that data at all. So that's something that we. So that's something that we could be directed to do within a relatively short timeframe. I think that's what you were referencing, Steve. And we could also consider requiring attorneys to provide that information to us via the my state bar profile, once the ability to do so is made available. Because we'll need to do that in order to really roll many of these things out. Before you, Tucker, I did want to ask you a question to respond to Michael's suggestion on the CTA audit issue. It reminds me of an exchange we had about the results of fingerprint, and whether or not, when we get notification of a first-time DUI, we might, your office might refer people to do a LAPD assessment. And your thoughts about whether or not you have the authority to do that, or the ability to do it? So I just, I just hope that you can respond to Michael's suggestion, and maybe talk a little bit about what we view as the authority to make those kinds of referrals to make that damage work.
So, a couple of different issues that have been brought up. First of all, let me say that in my limited time here, I have not spent a significant amount of time dealing with banking portal actions. So I could be wrong in my judgment, that we do go out in front of the law, and maybe better source of information on that than I am, but, but, that was, is my understanding. And it's been consistent with the letters that we send to the banks every year, saying how important it is, and largely because those initial, that initial overdraft can be assigned with the problem that's developing. So we do want to take a look. That said, I am absolutely in favor of trying to be smart about the way we handle our limited resources, and direct those to the problem areas that are the most severe. So if we can adequately protect the public, and move some of those off of our plates, and we can deal with the larger issues, I'd be happy to have that occur. The same applies for the first-time DUIs. What we do generally is, we do have the authority, I believe, to send them the resource letter, in essence, saying, hey, LAP exists, and you may want to take a self-assessment, or refer that, or go over that and be assessed, to determine what things needs you have. What I don't think that we currently have is the ability to require that they do so. And that's, in essence, the difference.
Let me comment if I can. One is, and we're going to get to this later today, is our desire to have affirmative legislative program for the bar. And so one of the things we're going to be asking our team, all 550 of you to do, is look for legal obstacles to your ability to be effective in your mission, and identify them to DAG's team, so that we can triage them for our legislative wish list. The second thing I would say is, I think you can create a little authority for yourself by deciding in an appropriate way, somebody taking you up on your suggestion, who can prove they did, gets that mitigation in future discipline. And somebody who fails to take you up on your suggestion, and you can prove they didn't, gets that as an exacerbating factor in future discipline. And it may not require anybody making anything other than a policy judgment that you made, but there are ways to get there, and I would encourage us to find those ways.
Just playing off of your comment, I could give Donna possibly 30 legislative suggestions.
I could have received them last year.
She wasn't in the right frame of mind, but...
Well, Monday she can pass that file a little bit a day.
If I may just share a little bit about what we do in Colorado, we're also a trust account notification state, so we get 410 notifications. We don't write letters to banks suggesting, we make every bank sign a contract with our office, that if they're going to offer an IELTS account, they have to let us know if it's below zero. But we make most of the individuals that just have bookkeeping or is a senior, we make them come to our trust account school, they pay $150, that more than covers the cost, so...
It's like traffic school.
It's like traffic school, we make them come to trust account school, and we have a very high success rate of lack of recidivism after the attempt. And they get five CLE credits.
And my suggestion, I'm not led to my suggestion, but the idea of my suggestion is to put the monkey on the licenses back, to go improve themselves. And I know there's an audit industry out there that would just love to offer this service.
If I may follow up briefly on your suggestion, and tries and stuff, that's as well, but looking at, at using the Colorado Self-Assessment, or the other self-assessment, or something like that, certainly, I think that what you're saying is that we're talking about with, under the public protection limits. And so if you have an objective about, you know, storing, implementing a self-assessment, we might want to provide some examples of areas in which it would, it would fit under the public protection limits, or not areas, I guess, we're looking for those purposes for everybody. But specifically, one of the things that Leah had mentioned earlier, which I'm trying to train you, is the issue of making the condition of probation. So it may be as voluntary for, for a lot of people, in the way it is in Colorado, but it can be, performing the self-assessment could be a condition of probation in certain circumstances. And looking at that one, we might, an objective, want to include specific reference to exploration of that kind of idea.
Great, okay, so we have about five minutes left, and I thought, there's a lot of good ideas that have been floated, so that they don't get lost, we should think about which body within the bar we should take this up to the wish committee. So, and I think specifically, the working group that Alan and I are a part of, in fact, I'm emailing that group right now, to pursue some of these ideas, but I think that's certainly something Alan and I can continue to track with, and track with staff. And Donna, you're doing the same thing with this panel, and the other two, we're going to get, you know, the telephonic meeting in February, then run down sort of everything that's happened, and then we can go with that. I'm more interested in capturing the objective and getting on our radar, than necessarily accomplishing it all in the time series, I know we're busy, but if you don't have a goal, then I'm going to get there.
If there's one other thing that I could add, relative to the collection of data, when I was talking to IT about adding this information to my state bar profile, they actually suggested that there was potentially another source of that information, at least for practice size. And that is, apparently, all of the law corporations already register with us, and they do require that they see the exact number of attorneys heading every firm we can, I have for that in fact.
But if, we don't have an automated system for tracking that information.
Correct.
I think that we could add this as an objective, and we'll figure out if we're able to.
And the list filling process should help us identify those who are on lists, maybe in their area of wire or something. We are, as intended by the scribes today, we're allowed to start through, and I would like to. So my suggestion is that we take a 10-minute break, and then start that sound again, and that will, that will further the agenda. Thank you, Steve Randy Kivitt, Carter House, extreme.
Calling to order the Board Executive Committee of Jezza, and we will start with the roll call.
Fox.
LeBron.
Here.
Lee.
Mendoza.
Here.
Stallins.
He's here.
He's here.
Say yes. All right, Stallins here.
Stephen.
Yes. And I should let people know that Vice President, or Vice Chair, as of last week, Jason Lee is not with us today, because he is in bed with the flu, so we wish him well. I'm going to skip the chair's report, I may choose to do it if we have time to keep things rolling, otherwise I'll do one report, end the board meeting. And I want to jump right to the Board Committee work plans, and please present a second.
Hi. So this is the first of four items that are going to be before the XCOM and the full board today, in a final implementation of the 2017 Governance and Public Interest Task Force report. The task force recognized that a more effective and well-functioning board committee process is essential to the ability of the full board to function at a higher policy level, and all the more important, with the reduction in board size. So related to the work plan issue later today at the full board meeting, we'll be asked to put changes to the board book that, number one, make development and adoption of work plans explicit responsibility of each board committee, and to make approval of work plans an explicit board executive committee responsibility. So the only change to this item, since it was posted last Friday, is that the Audit Committee did not have a quorum on Thursday, and didn't have an opportunity to adopt its own work plan, and will do so in the future, near future. So what we have before you is approval of the Brad work plan, the Programs Committee work plan, the Audit, the, and the planning committee work plan.
May I have a motion for some of those?
Second. Okay, is there any discussion from the committee?
Is there some reason why we can't just adopt the Audit Committee's work plan as well, and they can just change it if they want to?
I think they would like the opportunity to discuss it, and make sure that we're with it. They have an adopted work plan, but they're really working on a more substantive amendment to it, so I think we can give them that time. More discussion from the committee? Any discussion from the public? If not, may I substitute the roll call? That item is approved. Next up is structural changes to the trustee's skills matrix, we discovered that Mr. Fox does, in fact, have some skills. Please present a second.
Okay, so, at the Board Executive Committee meeting in November of 2017, the committee adopted the trustee's skills matrix, recommendation of the 2017 Governance and the Public Interest Task Force report. And the Board Executive Committee, excuse me, the Board Executive Committee Charter includes responsibility for updating and maintaining the matrix. So essentially, there are two changes to the structure of the matrix that you are being asked to approve. If you take a look at, if you take a look at the matrix in the first column that says trustee, it now includes term expiration information. And in the column, the new column between access to justice and legal ethics, you have a new column for diversity. So those are the two changes that are being proposed for your approval today.
And what's our process going to be when we onboard new trustees to gather their information and update the matrix? Because we have two new trustees coming to us shortly.
All right, so at the November meeting, was actually sort of a direction in the item, to have the Board Executive Committee discuss that, how the matrix is going to be updated, and how it was going to be presented to the appointing authorities, because I don't believe the Executive Committee has had an opportunity to have that discussion.
Yeah, if I could, we'd like to defer to staff, but I think that as we get the work of the D, we can set that the matrix completed.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to have this on our agenda very often, I just want to make sure we're gathering that information, A, to treat them with respect, and B, to make sure that we provide current information to our appointing authorities. May I have a motion on the second? Is there a second? Is there discussion from the committee? Is there discussion from the public? May I substitute the roll call? That one's done. Cyclical trustee training calendar, and this does not have to do with my ability to write advice, so this is pending for this one.
It's my, mine as well. So the 2017 Governance and Public Interest Task Force report exploring, explored ways to improve trustee orientation and training. At the, at this 2017 meeting, the board approved changes to the Board Executive Committee charter, memorializing those task force recommendations. Components of a multifaceted board member capacity building program now include, memorialized in the charter of the Board Executive Committee, one, an onboarding orientation, two, Disciplined Day and Missions Day, three, ongoing continuing education pursuant to cyclical trustee training calendar, and four, mentorship program, pairing new trustees with more experienced ones. Many of these elements already existed, but the innovation of the task force is to think about a model of trustee development as an ongoing activity, and to sew the elements together in a way that provides a coherent, continuous program of trustee development, support, orientation, and training during the entire course of the board year. So the trustee, the cyclical trustee training calendar that is attached to this item was our, is our proposal for how to do that training course of the board year, of starting with orientation at the beginning, and then continuing with various educational components at the remaining in-person board views. And the second element of the resolution is to really put into place a mentorship program, and this is all the more important, with two new trustees coming on board.
And what this recommendation from the task force represents is that historically, we had a board dominated by lawyers elected, who joined at a particular date, they all came at the same time, and we had an orientation for them, and then we assumed they knew what they needed to know, and can narrow it about our business. We now have appointments coming from four different sources, the court, the governor, and the two houses of the legislature, and they come at different times, and therefore, an annual policy training isn't going to do it. We also need to spread out training hours with getting our work done. So the idea is to spread it out across the course of the year, a little bit each meeting, and continue to do it. We try to frontload in the calendar year some of the really essential items, like the role of board and the anti-trust policy, and roll out other topics later in the year. So I think there's a fair amount of thinking that's gone into this, I think it's ready for our action, and I would invite a motion at this time.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion in the committee? Is there discussion from the public? May I substitute the roll call? It's approved. Come on.
Thank you. I, I'm presenting today the criteria for our two positions on legislation, and advancing state-wide legislative proposals. In recent years, the bar's primary focus in the legislative arena has been in relation to the annual fee bill. As a result, the, the bar has not recently adopted any criteria or guidelines that I have been able to identify, that identify the types of legislations that are appropriate for the bar to weigh in on, or whether we're talking about legislation that the bar might proactively advance, or legislation that the bar might be asked to take a support or an opposition position to. I felt it was critically important for the bar to develop a definition of what our legislative program is, and the guidelines that would guide staff and guide the board in determining, in making recommendations, and ultimately determining the legislation that it was appropriate to weigh in on. What you have before you is a half-page document that defines the purpose and the guiding principles of the state-wide legislative program. The guiding principles really center around the state bar mission, and the goals of the strategic plan goals, as these are really the roadmap for the primary functions of the bar, and should be directing what it is we seem to see to do. Establishing guiding principles will help to ensure that we remain focused on our mission, and will help the public also to understand the type of legislation that we may take positions on, not will, but may, and the types of legislation which would be, which could be outside the scope of our programs that we would not weigh in on. I, the item contains two, two resolutions for you to consider. One is the adoption of this purpose statement, as well as a elimination of Tab 3.5 in the board book. Tab 3.5 lays out some legislative policies, and it is very outdated. What I'm proposing is not a permanent elimination, but that will be coming back in a future meeting, not too far off in the distance, with an updated board book policy. I didn't want to have conflicting information out there in the board book with what the proposal is that I'm hoping that we'll be adopting today with criteria.
So, does that mean we don't have anything yet?
So it, so what we would have right now is the document setting forth the definition of the legislative program, and the, and the guidelines for the program. Some of the things that are in the board book, things like, we, what, what the, what color defines that we will be, we are able to spend general fund money on our legislative activities, that is... true regardless of there being a statement in the board book. So, really, those were the only types of things that, it didn't feel like they needed updating, but everything else really requires significant updating, and I felt that the guidelines and the criteria were sufficient to begin this process, but again, the plan would be to come back hopefully by the March meeting if we have to.
Overhauled?
Yeah.
This item represents really two significant moments in the life of the Bar. One is that it is an inflection point in our relationship with the legislature. My sense is that much of the last five years, our relationship with the legislature has been the Bar playing the defense, and for good reason, and the Bar responding to legislative initiatives that come from our legislators. This represents an opportunity for us to affirmatively set the table of things we would like to talk to them about. In recent years, we've only talked to them about the regulations on us. We've talked to them about the fee bill, and we've talked to them about the requirements they imposed upon us. And, of course, those dialogues will necessarily continue and build into the relationship. But I think this is an opportunity for us to begin to talk to them about how we can use their help in accomplishing our public protection mission. In what way can we be more effective, and can Californians be better protected by their government if the legislature works with us? So, that's the first significant change. We want to have a, we want to play offense as well as defense in order to, if you might use the cliched language I'm quoting, Sacramento. The second thing this reflects is that what our legislative function has been to take was really just a Keller-Rosterhouse compliance function. It was intended to screen the energy and enthusiasm of the sections through that first amendment analysis, and that's what we were doing, is we were screening the ideas of others. We no longer have as much of that function. We still need to contain the energy of the access mission and counsel and access and fairness within the constraints of the first amendment. I apologize enough for that necessity, but it is part of our judiciary duty, but it's a much smaller abuse of what we're holding to the new legislation. So, wiping the books clear of a policy that no longer fits, and starting with a new document that makes sense to us. Is there more from staff, or perhaps from Jennifer Water, our lobbyist to sit here on the side, and before I invite a motion? May I have a motion? Is there a second? Is there discussion from the board? Is there discussion from the audience?
Go ahead, Michael.
Go ahead, have a seat, and we'll take Joanna first.
I just want to make sure that during this very short period of time before we adopt a new policy that would impact our subentities, that staff that work with those subentities are sensitive to this issue, since there's a really big guidance right now, and I'm sure you'll get your ideas.
Hello, great brand is the University of San Francisco. I've come to speak fully in support of the notion of creating a legislative agenda and policy in a very thoughtful way, in a proactive way, ahead of the kinds of things that come along for the legislature. So, in no fashion do I object to the notion of subъект. I'd just like to ask her about a couple, one of them matters is pending, is in the process, and because of the particular timing of this particular matter, ask it not to be sort of set aside and shelved while this policy is decided upon, because, of course, the legislative calendar has its own way of working through the world, and it has very severe significant impacts on this particular item for not being able to move it forward as the policy matters are re-decided. And the item, of course, I'm referring to is the package of rule changes, guideline changes, and legislative changes that were worked on for four years now by different working groups associated with the committee of bar examiners, respecting unaccredited law schools and the accreditation of distance learning or more innovative forms certification. The State Bar has a very important role in crediting these schools. As we saw yesterday, it's a very important role in distributing lawyers across this very diverse state, geographically, providing services in remote areas, both distance learning law schools do that, as well as the Cal accredited law schools, as we saw in the conversations yesterday. This item would finally recognize that that kind of education, which, as you noted from the conversation today, is now being used across all other methods of educating lawyers, including by the Bar, including by other state partners, including by insurers of attorneys, to provide education more cost-effective, as well as a very effective way, that it gets the recognition that it's so long-served, and after we recognize all the work that has been put into this process. The Board has voted twice for this to be sent to the Supreme Court and to begin its journey through the necessary legislative processes. The last time was at its meeting in November. And I don't come to complain about delays, except that the legislative calendar ticks over on February 15th for what amounts to a year. As everybody's probably aware, if the bill doesn't drop into the hands of the various parties by about February 15th, then we have another window later in the year, but the bills that get introduced later in the year really very often don't get addressed in the session. They're then addressed at the beginning of the next session, in January of the following year, and then, of course, don't become effective for another full year. So, there happens to be a particular moment in time that the Board has voted twice for this matter to go forward, and so I'd ask your consideration in not ending up in a delayed status as a consequence of this very worthwhile effort of defining the Bar's legislative procedures. I see that this will not be on your agenda again for district policies to implement until March. That, of course, puts it in a very bad timing position, this would be this particular item. So, I don't know exactly what to do about that with the Board's vote, but those relevant to this conversation, I'm sure there is.
Michael, if I may respond?
Sure.
So, there are a couple of items, the ones that the public commenter has noted, that the Board considered in isolation earlier in the year. The plan is to bring to our February meeting, continue our adoption of these guidelines that will be written to your February meeting, a proposal for a 2018 legislative agenda. Because these items were considered in isolation, I would be putting them back before you as part of the overall consideration of the agenda. So, we will be looking at this, at all of those issues, as we are considering what we think that the Bar should move forward with as a proactive legislative agenda for the committee.
Thank you. Anything further from the audience? Anything further from the committee? I believe I have a motion and a second. May I substitute the roll call? We are ready to adjourn this committee meeting. I should announce that although we adjourned the Audit Committee from Thursday to today at 11:45, at the request of the Chair, the Audit Committee will not be, and we will take up at a special set public conference meeting, allowing them to get their work done. Our agenda setting process allows us to get started on our forty cent today, and I'd like to do that by opening the closed session items. So, as soon as I can get the rest of the trustees seated, please come forward. We'll take roll, and then we'll go into closed session. We will return to open session at 12:45 sharp. We'll get as much of our closed session work done by 12:45 as we can, and come do our open session, and then if there's any closed session business, we'll do it at the end of the day. So, with that, I'd invite our trustees to come take seat, and we are adjourned as the Okay, let's get started with our business meeting. Welcome and thank you all for joining us for this gathering of the four trustees. We will start with an open session roll call.
Proctor.
Here.
Kent. Fox. LeBron. Here. Lee. Mendoza. Here. Salad. Here. Specter. Here. Stowings. Steinbacher. Here. Stevens.
Okay, with that, I would invite public comments, if there are any members of the public commission to address the report. This is your opportunity. If you come forward and sit at the table and push the buttons on one of those little mics, turn it to red, we'll be able to hear you, as will the folks who are watching our webcast. I do suggest you get close to the mic. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Want to tell us who you are?
Yeah, it's the first time I've done this.
Good afternoon, members of the Executive Committee.
My name is Scott Holland, and I'm here to address the issues of the mandatory fee arbitration. Is it time to review? Attorney fee arbitration was first proposed in 1976. Is it working to protect the public in the 20th century? From my personal experience, a solid no. In my case, I've gone through the fee arbitration process and won a decision in my favor, $7,800. Now, I find myself being sued in Superior Court for breach of contract. I requested mandatory fee arbitration. I exercised my rights to dispute the attorney's fees, and I am being sued because the attorney lost. I am in a battle with what I would call an abusive attorney who is using the mandatory fee arbitration to inflict harm. In my research, I find that I am at least the third client who has been sued after mandatory fee arbitration from this attorney. This does not lend itself to the statement made by the Ninth Circuit Court about mandatory fee arbitration and its intention to protect the public. The Ninth Circuit goes on to say in several of its decisions, "to even the disparity of bargaining power in attorney fee matters which favors the attorney." Other comments? That many clients could not afford hiring additional counsel to litigate fees disputes in the civil courts. I'm one of them. These are repeated statements Ninth Circuit's court has made in its reviews. In the spirit of the law, if the spirit of the law is to allow the general public an even hand in fee disputes, then I would like to address the Executive Committee to review this and make some changes to the current mandatory fee arbitration. One, if a client agrees to binding, make the arbitration binding at the client's request. If an attorney is feeling that arbitrators are making bad decisions, let the attorneys file a complaint with the State Bar against the arbitrators, but don't make it the public's problem. Two, by making arbitration binding at the client's request, this would end it in arbitration, not cut or clutter the Superior Court with rehashing a fee arbitration. For the clients who have the resources to go to Superior Court, they still have this option. For me, I would be done. Raise the limit on attorney's fees in small claims to $10,000. Currently, it sits at $5,000. My claim is at $7,800. I would gladly have gone to small claims and fought this a second time. I prepared, and I won, yet I lost, because I'm now stuck representing myself in Superior Court, which, as they say, anybody who represents himself is a fool for an attorney. Well, how about one who's representing himself who's not an attorney? Where does that leave me? What percentage of the fee mediation cases actually end up going to court? And if the percentage is high, it's broken. What percentage of individual attorney's fee mediation agreements actually end up in court? If an attorney is appealing 100% of his fee arbitration hearings, the system is broken. Quick concerns I have on attorneys committing misdemeanors in the attorney's daily practice. Currently, this attorney, currently, the attorney I'm in battle with is filing court documents under a law firm, a professional corporation. His corporation is currently suspended from the Secretary of State, and his law firm is not registered with the State Bar. Both of these are misdemeanors. I had to call the State Bar to find out that he was not a registered law corporation, yet he is acting as a law firm. His name was common. In my call to the State Bar, I found out he's not alone. There are several attorneys with his similar name acting as law firms that are not registered. This information should be available to the public without a phone call. It should be listed on website release. That's where, as a concerned public, I would like it.
You've been speaking for four minutes. Sorry, sir, if you wind it up, please.
Two lines.
Great.
And thank you very much, and I'm sorry.
No worries.
What are a few misdemeanors in one's law practice to do with morality? From the Board's perspective, I would hope a lot. Thank you for your time, and I hope the State Bar can make changes to help the public and put the public first.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, members of the Executive Committee. My name is Jennifer Pendleton. I'm addressing my concerns about the complaint and investigation process conducted by the State Bar. I'm arguing for greater due diligence to the complaint process and greater parity with the disciplinary actions of other state licensing boards. I argue that the damages wrought by a grossly negligent, unfit-to-practice attorney can supersede those of, say, a licensed professional psychologist, who is likely to meet with loss of licensure for like actions, and yet attorneys are receiving a mere letter, in my case, of warning, having caused comprehensive damages, financial, legal, and emotional, through evidence fraud and legal mayhem due to gross negligence, personal problems, and receipt of a retainer which has not been used to advance a client's case, further contract. With all due respect, I argue that it is time to call into question the evident conflict of interest obtaining when a trade organization is also in control of overseeing serious disciplinary investigations. Further statistics, a comparatively limited number of complaints result in actual discipline. I argue that this does not reflect the true state of factual damages inflicted by some attorneys intentionally acting in ways which harm the public. I argue for a separation between the two bodies. I argue that there should be a higher burden of proof placed on the attorney being complained about. I argue that there should be stricter controls placed on the mental health history and criminal history of persons applying for licensure. I argue that greater credence should be paid to incoming complaints, particularly where there is a complaint history that matches the widely-publicized one online. If the principal mission of the State Bar is protection of the public from harm, is it not time to address the legitimate factors mitigating against this premise?
Thank you for your comments, both of you. The open meeting laws may not allow us to respond to your comments today, but please be assured that the Board has heard them, and that our management staff has heard them. And as to Mr. Perpelt's remarks, you're sufficiently persuasive that as of January 1st, we are no longer a trade association. We have spun off of those functions into a private, non-profit corporation, and this is just a regulatory agency. Again, thank you for your comments, and we have made note of them.
I'd like to make myself available if there is any committee set up on mandatory fee arbitration and review of votes. How would I make myself available, and I would like to be available, to participate in that process as a part of the public?
If you'll just leave your name and your contact information with the nearest staff number to you, we'll make that happen.
Thank you very much, and thank you for hearing us today, and thank you for the extra minutes.
I want to leave your written remarks with us on the record, but we have to tape them.
They're my notes.
Understood. Was there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the Board at this time? Okay, that will take us to the Chair's report. As the trustees know, I use my Chair's report to update you on things that have been happening in between meetings, behind the scenes. I also use them to daylight for the more general public, some of the things that have been going on in the background. And since I haven't seen you in almost two months, I've got a little bit more to report than I commonly do, but I'll talk fast. First, I'd like to express my appreciation on behalf of myself and Vice Chair Jason Lee to the Supreme Court for appointing us to be your Chair and Vice Chair through the September meeting. We are honored by their confidence in us and appreciate the responsibility we have to the Board. I'm grateful to the Senate Rules Committee for filling two of our vacancies. You've heard before about Josh Perkula. Josh started his career as a deputy city attorney in Los Angeles, and is now a leniency lawyer in-house at a real estate investment trust here in Los Angeles. He was appointed last year, and then we figured out if we disappointed him and waited until after the year to reappoint him, that he could start and take a four-year term, and not have to wait until next September when the vacancy that he was appointed to was available. And that all happened, and so he's been appointed and will be joining us shortly. And we also have, one of my notes, another appointee from the Senate Rules Committee to a non-lawyer position, and that is Debbie Manning, Deborah Manning. She is a former sergeant in arms with the State Senate, comes to us with very substantial experience and relationships and perspective that I'm sure we will all find enormously valuable. I hope to have them sworn in and in place in time for our February video conference meeting. They have preset committee assignments, so the committee chair should have a quick look at your committee assignments and see if they're coming to you, as they probably are. Speaking of comings and goings, some members of this Board, including myself, have terms that expire in September, and I would like you to think about how you might contribute to contribute to the work of the Bar. If you wish to be reappointed-- If you wish to be reappointed, my seat is available, applications to the Speaker without deadline. Jason's seat is available, applications to the Supreme Court, and I believe the deadlines for that process are on our website. Public seats, appointments are available from the Governor, the two legislative seats are filled. That leaves only the Assembly's public member seat to be filled, so we're still trying to get suggestions to be Assembly Speaker for that same as well. I would want to congratulate the California Lawyers Association for its nativity. They came into, they were conceived as the first of the new. They are up and running, having achieved agreements with us to take the running run. They have elected officers. We are very pleased that our own Heather Rosen, who was Vice President of this Board and known to many of us, is their first president. And if anybody has the energy and the strategic vision to help the California Lawyers Association succeed in their mission, it's Heather. We look forward to their success. At the advice of the consultant who helped us with our governance in the public interest task force process and our transition committee, your Executive Director and I have been working to document best practices for our relationship. What role do I play as your Chair? What role does she play as your CEO, and how do we get along, so to speak? And that documentation process is underway, and it's intended to be a legacy to future Chairs. And when that document is fully polished and ready to go, we'll be sure to share it with you. But I wanted to note that that effort was underway. We are, as you know, on our agenda today, we'll be diving into our budget discussion. And as the Executive Director's Report has made clear, and as Kevin's Report will make clear, it, the time has come to have a serious conversation with the legislature about a fee increase. We've been operating on the same fee level for most of the last 17 years. It's never been higher than what it is. It has occasionally been lower. We lost revenue streams on the sections left, and we lost economies of scale on the sections left. And we have a need to pay our employees fairly and keep our buildings from falling down and those good things. So you'll be hearing more about our need to engage in dialogue with the legislature about the financial needs of this agency and how best to meet them. We have some significant developments involved in our capital improvement program that will draw our attention on the budget. In trying to deliver two floors of space in our San Francisco building to the private market, we have confronted some deferred maintenance issues that the City of San Francisco will require us to attend to before we can deliver that space to market. So that's another significant six or seven-figure strain on our budget that you'll be seeing more about shortly. The accomplishment of electronic fee billing is notable. My firm in particular was glad to be able to send one job for all of the lawyers that we pay fees for. This is a good time to remind you all that if you haven't paid their, paid your dues, they're due by February 1st, and they are more expensive after February 1st than they are before February 1st. We have a March deadline for a report to the legislature about the Client Security Trust Fund. We only have one more meeting of this board before that report is due, so sharpen your pencils for our February video conference meeting where that report will be discussed. The legislative mandates from SB 36 also included the establishment of a working group on malpractice insurance. The legislature discussed the idea of mandating malpractice insurance for all lawyers. That has been studied in the past. We've been asked to study it again. You'll see on your agenda today a protocol to get that process up and running. They have a fairly impressive time to get their work done, so that's coming forward as well. Steve Moab, who we're happy to have on our team as our Chief Trial Counsel, is in a position that requires Senate confirmation. That's a Senate Rules process that we'll be confronting shortly. We wish him well in that process, and we look forward to a productive dialogue about that as well. We had what was, might have been the final meeting of our transition committee, or perhaps the second final meeting of our transition committee, to assist Leah in transitioning out of her chief operating officer role and into the chief executive officer's role. That was a useful discussion and helpful to check in with her. The biggest to-do item, I think, is to finish filling out your management team, my dear.
It's close.
If you just get Kevin's decline a little while longer, we will be fine. We have been in extensive negotiation with our, our, the unions who represent our employees, and I don't quite have an announcement to make, but we will have one shortly. And I'm grateful that we've had productive discussions and that we are reestablishing the management labor teamwork that will be so helpful to us as an organization. And I think that's everything I had. The only thing I want to add before I can have a little bit of a report is to reflect on what we've been doing the last couple of days. We've had a very productive strategic planning discussion, a very useful admissions day and discipline day orientation for our board. And I want to express particular appreciation to the trustees who will be laboring our work amid that those training and planning opportunities have certainly taught in his role as Chair, financing, planning, oversaw the effort. Stacy and Renee kicked us off with a very useful dialogue about how they engage our employees, enhance their morale, and tap their talents. Mark and Brandon led us in a useful discussion yesterday about our access to justice mission. Alan and Brandon, our access to justice mission. And then this morning, we had a very helpful discussion led by Sean and Hyland about preventing harm rather than merely punishing you. So I want to thank all of you for that work, acknowledge the value of it, and look forward to the benefit from it. With that, up to you.
So, how very brief remarks. I want to remind the board that I am providing a written Executive Director's Report in advance of each meeting that's posted, and also remind you, call your attention to the dashboards that are posted along with my Executive Director Report. We will continue to work on these throughout the year, but I did want to be sure that you take a look at those in advance of each meeting. Just picking up a little bit where Michael left off, I want to congratulate the board on what I think was a remarkably successful planning session, substantive discussion, really rich and engaged discussion that I think has been a result of making some significant and important amendments to our strategic plan, really helping us turn the corner away from just responding to crises to doing a proactive execution of our role as the largest State Bar in the century. So I congratulate the board on that. I have several comments to make regarding the budget. I am going to save those for the budget item. Other than to say to reiterate Michael's statements about the need for a licensing fee increase and assure the board that this will be my primary focus over the next several months. 18 years without an increase is too long. So the time is up for us to continue waiting on that, and I can't emphasize the need for a fee increase more to the board. And lastly, before we get started with the agenda, just want to make a few brief announcements about changes in executive staff name. First, I want to congratulate Donna Hirschfield on her transition from Chief of Mission Advancement and Accountability to Chief of Programs. So she will be no longer sitting in this seat at future board meetings, and I want to congratulate Dag McLeod on his promotion into the role of Chief of Mission Advancement and Accountability. And you will see him sitting up here at future meetings, so I'd like to congratulate both of you. I also want to ensure the board is aware that we did, we saw the retirement of Christine Long at the end of last year. I think we reported that to you previously. And that our Director of the Office of Legal Services, Ron Fong, who has not been with us very long, but has lead credit impact, will be leaving at the end of February to take a position with John Marshall, University School of Law in Chicago. So he will be opening up a recruitment for his position shortly. In addition, we will be launching a recruitment for a Chief Financial Officer. Kevin has done an incredible job in the time he's been with us and will continue to support us through the transition, but it is time now to, to launch a recruitment, so that will be coming up shortly.
So let's circle back to the one business item under my report, and that is the amended meeting schedule. You'll note in particular that our Friday meetings over the course of the year are moving to later in the month to better space out staff access to us. I would ask that Dag's team adjust the calendar appointments. You sent all of us to reflect that. I would encourage the trustees to check your own schedules as well. And I have a motion to approve the calendar meeting schedule. Just a second. Let's take the rolls, and some of you showed up for Phil's coffee.
It's about middle home.
Roger?
Yes.
Chen?
Here. Yes.
Fong? LeBron?
Here. Yep.
Lee? Ms. Ozawa?
Yes.
Saba?
Yes.
Specter?
Yes.
Stalling?
Yes.
Steinbrenner?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
That brings us to our present calendar. We have five items listed on the present calendar. Do I have a request to pull any of those for discussion? One once?
Yes, we're going to pull one over vision.
That is item?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-six dash three, we'll pull that one, Joanna. Anything else? Once, twice, and three times. The other four items are deemed approved. Can we have somebody report on the board? I imagine that's done.
Who's that, Sarah?
Sarah, I'm sorry. Well, Sarah's gathering notes. This is another product of the Governance in the Public Interest Task Force. It was part of our desire to support the Bar's org chart, which I described when I started here as looking like an electron cloud and trying to slim it down to a more manageable structure to reduce the number of sub-entities, clarify their relationships to the board, change our new structure to reflect those relationships, and generally create a more manageable and transparent organizational structure. The amendments in front of us are relatively formal substantive changes to the board book to reflect that restructuring. Joanna, with her eagle eyes, found a few improvements that could be made, and the goal is to walk through Joanna's suggestions, and then if they're all acceptable, we'll take one motion to accept. The fact that she's amended it, somebody wants to carve any of those out, we can do that.
Thank you. Yes, this is the final, final implementation item for the 2017 Governance in the Public Interest Task Force recommendations. And with this item, every recommendation of the 2017 Task Force not requiring legislative action has been brought before the full board or to the Board Executive Committee for action, and every recommendation has been added. So I think that's a fine point to make at this point in, in, in history. The first set of board book amendments were brought to you in August 2017. The second set of board book amendments were brought to you in November of 2017, and this is the final set of board book amendments. They contain essentially three elements. One, a comprehensive set of amendments to Tab 2.2 covering the size and composition of the board, elimination of trustee elections. The second is a comprehensive set of amendments to Tab 2.3, which covers selection and terms of officers and elimination of officer elections. And then the last one is Tab 2.6, which you approved, a comprehensive setup of revisions for last August. But today, we have four additional revisions. One is to reflect the statutory composition of the Board Executive Committee from passage of Senate Bill 36. Two is to amend the charters of grad programs, audit, and finance and planning to make an explicit requirement of those committees to develop and develop code plans and to amend the charter of the Board Executive Committee to make that an explicit requirement that the Board Executive Committee approve those work plans. Then also to assign to the Board Executive Committee the responsibility for approving board book amendments, so that the board book amendments don't have to come to the board each and every time. And lastly, you'll find at the end of Tab 2.6, an updated board committee structure chart. So that, that's what's before you, those amendments to the three tabs. And we prepared, we prepared a, a file for the two tabs that Joanna wants to speak to. So the first one, we walked through this, is just actually, as I said, meant to delete elections from the Article 1 title. Let me get to the first substantive one, Joanna. And you can see it's going through a lot. It's really hard to figure.
I can, well, while Sarah's looking for the changes, I can explain to you that most of the changes come under Article 2, responsibilities of officers, and focus on the Chair responsibilities. It used to be President. We really didn't change many of those, and I, I wanted to take some of those responsibilities out to reflect more of a Chair position as opposed to the President position, which was an effort we were trying to do with changing the title. The ones that I was recommending being removed were, in my opinion, executive committee functions, and the Chair is more facilitator in that respect. For example, supervising, directing, and controlling the officers in the State Bar. I, I thought that was more an executive committee function and not.
What page is this, John?
Page seven and eight of Attachment B.
Yeah, I'm on the attachment, just right on.
Well, the, the different sections have, are different section numbers. So, the letters.
Oh, I see.
Another one was establishing the performance, expectations, and measurement systems for the Executive Director. I thought it was more of an executive committee function. It shouldn't be controlled by the Chair. There's a few others that are all identified. So if, if, if somebody strongly believes that that should be a function of only the Chair, you know, I'd like to hear their position on that, but I was, when I was going through it, I really thought we should try and focus more on what the role is now going forward.
So that's all three. Were there just three?
There was number 11.
Right, which is supervising officers, which is the Vice Chair. We no longer have a board treasurer, but we may well have a staff treasurer.
13B.
Which is establishing performance expectations for the Executive Director.
16, 17, and 18.
Setting the goal-setting process for the board. 17, which just helps in clarifying the roles of the board members. You might read under the President, just so the buck stops somewhere. I'm not sure. But that's really about is managing the inter-board conflict. And I think that, that buck might need to stop on the Chair's responsibility. So on 16, I'm not, 17, I'm not sure that I agree with you. On 18, again, I do think that orientation's a broader function than just the Chair. By, from my perspective as the current Chair, short-term, I'm exposed. I agree with all your recommendations except for 17.
Well, I would point out that number nine is results disputes and manages conflict among board members already. So that's already covered.
Okay.
I read that one as essentially describing or determining essentially what the roles are going to be, which I think is a full executive committee.
I'm a little concerned about taking out 16. I understand it's the Chair and not a President, but that's what board chairs do all the time. Someone needs to be the conduit to the Executive Director. We can't do that by committee. We all provide feedback, but I've never been on a board where the Chair was not responsible for being the liaison, the communication, the conduit to the.
Yeah, there is a provision that makes liaisons, that you're supposed to change that.
Oh, but it's all crossed out?
No, no, up here, up above, here, also. Over 16.
So we're adding one in?
No, no, here, I'm sure, right here. Two, the Chair shall be the Board's primary spokesperson to the Executive Director of facility communications between the Board and staff and to ensure they.
Okay, so are we just taking this out because it's redundant?
So Sarah, this is, this isn't Joanna's.
Page seven.
So on 16, the red line on the screen, is that being relocated, or is that something?
It was redundant.
Ah, got it.
Ah, okay, so you're just taking it out because it's redundant, not because you're thinking that away.
The 16 that I was, that I think should be the executive committee or the planning and finance, the planning and, yeah, I think it's finance committee. It's setting and overseeing the goal-setting process for the board. I think that needs to be a committee decision, our strategic plan, or something. We've had issues with that in the past.
So we have touched on all of them.
In that section, there was Attachment C, Tab 2.6, Sarah? It'll be clarified under Section 3, which is page two of the Attachment C red line. That the way it was drafted. the executive committee, for example, this year would meet with the chair to determine liaisons for next year's board committees. And I thought it was more appropriate for the committee chairs for the committee that year should be helping to determine what liaison roles should be played as opposed to past chairs. I'm not sure if I'm explaining it. Michael, you want to give it to Sarah?
Well, on this one, I'm not sure that I agree that you should take this responsibility away from the chair. And the only reason I say that is that using the talents of the board to fulfill committee assignments and liaison roles is a little bit of a wimp excuse. Where we're trying to give everybody a balanced amount of work, draw on that particular talent, get all the appointing authorities in each place. And some of you ended up with committee assignments that I did not have been fully satisfied with, but for the meeting liaison roles that went with it. And some of you had a heavier committee agenda that I would have been happy with, but for the fact that you even had a liaison role that I liked. So at the end of the day, the board has to approve whatever the chair recommends. But I would leave this as part of the mix because I found it helpful in balancing my claims on your time.
Are you on ninety-eight?
Yeah, three A.
Can I make a comment on this one?
Right.
The board liaison policy was amended last November. And so I think it's important, it's important to make the distinction between the liaisons, the subentities, and the other kinds of liaisons, for example, the functions at the state bar, like legislation, litigation, et cetera. So my suggestion to Joanna is actually memorialized in this.
Oh, so the idea here is that when programs chooses it's a liaison to CD, it's your job, not mine.
All right, I would work with you this year as the current chair for those liaison positions. We're not talking about your legislation, of course, no, of course. We're talking about the committee, standing committee liaison.
Okay, I'll go with you.
And the way that it was revised last November was to make it a consultation process.
So I got lost in all this. So Joanna, just what's your point that you're trying to make for this?
The chair currently essentially appoints the board liaisons to things like technology, personnel support. This takes out the liaisons to, for example, to the committee of bar examiners, which falls into programs committee. And whoever's chair in that committee should be participating in that decision. And the way it's drafted, it wasn't.
So the new red line text that you see there is a suggestion that I made to Joanna for addressing her concern, and she expressed that she was fine with it.
And you're striking the last sentence, three A, because it appears elsewhere, I imagine?
Yes, that's correct.
Got it.
I think it's also because the board approves appointments to standing committees throughout the year.
Oh, so it's timing, not role.
And I think the last change was Section 5 of that same section.
Correct.
Okay, now it's all makes sense now. I kind of forgot why we have this attachment called Joanna Mendez. I get it, okay.
Well, that's one of the...
It's all very confusing. When you open it up, and it's board book.
So the last change, staff meets regularly with the chair and vice chair of each standing committee. And it was drafted, mentioned earlier.
Section 5, five.
Yeah, Section 5.
Okay, sorry, keep going.
And I, so I wanted to make sure the vice chairs were included in that for the board book purposes. And adding language that states that we would continue to monitor the work plan throughout the board year by regular scheduled communications.
It just announced to...
It doesn't say it on any of the, yeah, it's over here.
It was emailed, there was an email.
After Joanna read the agenda package, she had suggestions for this item. I asked that they distributed and banned them being... It was void to be in the board's...
Yeah, this qualifies what we're doing right now, and it seems to be working extremely well. So I wanted to make sure it was included in the board book.
I'm uncomfortable about Joanna's suggestion. May I have a motion on this item?
Michael, actually.
Please.
Here's one item that I, as I mentioned before. So in the charter for the board executive committee, there's a new addition that says the executive committee can approve amendments to the board's policy manual, also referred to as the board book. I think that should be subject to board approval as it's adoption of state bar policy.
Staff thoughts?
The usual, Sean and I have had a useful dialogue throughout when it came to his chair about what is appropriate to do at the board level, what's appropriate to do at the executive committee level. And he's observed, and I've observed, that last year in particular, we overrelied on an ex comm because it's difficult to schedule. But oh, we address that problem by scheduling, like, our meetings in advance. But there still needs to be this notion that we have these ex comm able to act for the board when timely action is required, but it should not displace the board when timely action is not required. And the question he's asking is, if we're making ongoing policy, what's the hurry? Shouldn't we be able to get that in front of the board? So I think what you're suggesting is you do allow the ex comm to change policy. It has to come to the board for ratification.
Yeah, just, I mean, that, just as it happened today, if you put on a consent agenda, it's not controversial.
Yes, the only thing I'm thinking about, and I don't know whether it's staff who's concerned about this, there may be a policy that's an obstacle, something that needs to happen. So we may need to amend the policy until last month to happen. And then add amendment policy to come to the board at its next meeting.
I think maybe more than not, it is the, more of a doubt question about what is the role of ex comm? So, you know, in my view, ex comm should have to be in the board even then ultimate oversight over board book. That may be, you know, a difference of the unit. But it happened this way today because we had to have an ex comm meeting that we're going to the board. And if that's the role of the board, if you continue to do that, there's the problem of being able to be nimble and flexible. But it's also just thinking about what is the role of ex comm?
Well, I can amend this one because I think that Sean and I, there's two different issues. So the first is the executive committee needs the authority to act outside regular board meetings when time necessitates. And I believe that power is already in the board book. And then the executive committee is supposed to report to the board promptly and later than the next board meeting. So that's, I think that's covered. But absent such an emergency, I think the board book, as I understand it, is an expression of state bar policy. So it does seem to be something that should require board approval absent an emergency service necessity.
So I absolutely think that the executive committee is necessary and should be changed from that because you always need a nimble, quick way to work. Number two, I think we should also factor into our thinking and just to make it honest that we're a much smaller board than we used to be. And that has to be just a filter and a prism in which we look for this. And lastly, I would say, I don't, you know, I actually kind of, concerns me that this, before the next board meeting, because even though now we have like kind of a lengthy check-in, I think sometimes that's a long time. So I think it's up to the chair's discretion, but I would ask that, you know, decisions that are made in ex comm are conveyed on a timely basis. So I would just like to have that covered.
Right, Sean, are you content with the addition? Is it subject to board ratification?
Yes.
Okay, personally, I find that unacceptable. Is there more discussion on this item?
Michael, please. There are circumstances where we are updating the board book simply to, for example, implement specifically the changes from the NOB legislation or other pieces of legislation. So there are substantive policies for the board to be considered in that changing, but the changes are necessary in order to reflect this current state of already changed policy or already changed law. And I think that was also part of the thinking, to the extent that that's what we're implementing, seeing that the board agenda with that may not be necessary and seeing that your ex comm is still more appropriate.
Yeah, I think you're stuck with a consent calendar review by the board because what you consider non-substantive, one of us might disagree with you on, as you've already seen today. So I think, I think more ratification is probably the best compromise here.
Is there more discussion on this item? I have a motion that incorporates Joanna's changes and Sean's change. Is there a second?
All second.
Is there further discussion for the board? Is there discussion for the public? May I substitute for roll call?
Yes.
So we end. Okay, that takes us to item 111. And just to remind us, when a chair makes a committee report, that constitutes a motion which does not require a second when you see immediately discussion of both. We have one, we have two items from my committee, from the executive committee. The first is criteria for taking positions on legislation and advancing legislative proposals. We had a discussion of this right before lunch. I think most of you were in the room with me on that. So I won't present it again, but I'm happy to answer any questions that come my way. In the absence of discussion, is there any discussion for the public? May I substitute for roll call? This item is approved. That takes me to the second item from ex comm. We received a very thoughtful proposal from the district attorney of San Francisco, George Gascón, to ensure that all California's residents have access to justice in the most fundamental way, that they can come to the courthouse, seek its services, without fearing immigration prosecution. Our chief justice has spoken passionately and persuasively that courthouses need to be a safe space for everybody who resides in California without respect to their immigration status. And our mission includes access to justice. And this therefore is part of our mission too. However, achieving that shared goal has proven more complex than anticipated. And we have legislation pending in the legislature, which Mr. Gascón is supporting, and that we have pledged to work with him on. And we have a proposal that he's brought to us today. He has asked to withdraw this proposal today and has sent me a letter which he's asked me to read to you. I'll do that. Dear Chair Collentano, thank you for the opportunity to provide further input regarding the rule of professional conduct our office has proposed. While we understand the obstacles to adopting such a rule as the Office of Professional Confidence recently outlined, we remain hopeful that the State Bar of California will take action that helps meet our shared goal of ensuring access to the courts for all. As you know, with reports of ICE agents in our courtrooms and immigrant immigration raids in sanctuary cities like San Francisco, our undocumented neighbors are less likely to come forward to work with law enforcement and hold dangerous offenders accountable. When this happens, our community's safety is jeopardized as unreported crimes and criminals pose a threat that extends far beyond immigrant communities. Whether the State Bar takes action in the form of the new rule of professional conduct and ethics opinion, chooses to assist with the new rule of court for heavy legislation, or something else entirely, the goal is the same, to prevent the unnecessary disclosure of immigration status and to instill confidence in an otherwise hesitant community. Ultimately, someone's country of origin has no bearing on whether they are suitable to take the stand. With renewed confidence, California can continue to ensure that crimes are reported, and the State Bar can promote equal access, participation, and fair administration of justice. Given the current climate, I applaud the State Bar for their recognition of its very real and legitimate issue, and look forward to collaborating in the near future. So we'll take no action on this item, but we will commit ourselves to continuing dialogue with District Gascón and the legislative sponsors of this proposal so we can achieve our shared objectives. Is there anything further we need to do on this item yet?
No, I just, the board has heard quite a bit from Randy D. Dorm in our Office of Professional Confidence over the last couple of days. And I wanted to recognize him for his work, to work with DPA's office in San Francisco, which has ultimately resulted, I think, in this really positive outcome as we will look forward to working together to address this really critical appellate protection issue.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, that takes us to item 701. I believe we need to hear from Kevin.
Yes, Chair Collentano, members of the board. Chair Collentano, members of the board. A little over a year ago, December of 2016, you authorized the staff to start charging a credit card cost recovery on member dues. We've collected in that past little over a year about $900,000 on the $37 million or so that is paid via credit cards for member fees. This savings has been reinvested in the State Bar's discipline system. We are now asking that the board authorize us to extend that cost recovery to the other places that we use credit cards and debit cards for collections, which is primarily admissions at the State Bar exam and miscellaneous other places throughout the State Bar, totaling about $25 million more. So $37 million through the, through the member fees and about $25 million more that we're asking for permission now. The, we will, we do propose to leave an option that would not cause a fee to be charged if they want to pay through an electronic transfer. But the fees for, for credit cards and debit cards are higher, and therefore, we would like to recover those fees for people using those payment mechanisms. Our estimate is that there is about, a little over $500,000 a year of fees that we would be able to cost recovery and reinvest in the discipline system.
May I have a motion?
I move.
Is there discussion? Is there discussion from the audience? May I substitute for roll call? The item's approved. That takes us to the budget, which is also Mr. Marburg.
So in, in November, we presented the preliminary budget to you. And you approved it, and we filed it with the state legislature on the due date of November the 15th. There is now a requirement to file a final budget with the state legislature by February 15th. And so this is in front of you to approve the final budget. The bulk of what my comments are, are related to the changes that have taken place in the budget since the version that you approved in COVID. Primarily, those changes include a lot more explanatory information to make the budget understandable to stakeholders. So for example, there is an executive director's message in there. There is significant, more narrative discussion of the budget. And there are departmental summaries that include narratives of what each department is about, what their accomplishments have been in the past year, what their objectives are in the coming year, and some performance metrics. We've updated certain budget amounts, and I'll go through those in a next slide, or a couple slides.
I think it was the left one.
Nope, nope.
It was the right side.
The right. Okay, so before we get into some of the number changes, I would just like to make a few comments. This, this budget aligns with the State Bar's goals. And so for, for example, and specifically, it provides the continued funding that we need for the core operations, administration, and discipline. It includes the new labor agreement requirements, including the transition to CalPERS health plans. It includes the transition of executives beginning to contribute as shared toward their own healthcare causes. It continues to prioritize funding for OCTC, where despite fiscal pressures, we have an increase of six employees in that, in that department or in that division. We have the beginning of the fingerprinting implementation budgeted in here. We say beginning because there will be additional needs for staffing as we move further into the implementation. We have budgeted the administration, the admissions information management system, and the rest of the continuing implementation of the case management system. This budget provides for the first time translation and interpretation services. And very significantly, there are capital and IT needs that have been budgeted. So in the preliminary budget, there was $2 million for the Howard Street project or improvements, maintenance and improvements. And as Chair Collentano said, there has been additional needs discovered for getting the building in compliance before we can take on additional tenants there. And so there's a relatively large increase in the amount that we are budgeting for Howard Street. So I say that these, that these IT projects and capital projects are important because for the most part, our budget is in balance without those. But because there are one significant, one-time projects, the general fund is being reduced by, to the... by the tune of $8.9 million in 2018, budgeted. And most of that, almost all of that, is in these areas of the need for IT projects and capital projects that can no longer be deferred. And any time that there is a situation like we have of 17 or 18 years without fee increases, these are the kinds of things that frequently get delayed and have been delayed here in the past as investments in those one-time expenditures. The State Bar has no dedicated funding source for these one-time, non-recurring expenses. When you look around at most governmental entities, there are usually dedicated funding sources for one-time, non-recurring expenses. Frequently, they're grants. Frequently, there's a grant coming in, and there's a capital improvement being made. Since we don't have dedicated funding sources, then it becomes incumbent on us to identify funds out of the member dues, member fees, and dedicate those in a pool that then could be used as necessary toward what are one-time, but you know that there will be one-time again at some point in the future. There will be needs for capital improvements, there will be need for IT projects, and there needs to be funds set aside in order to accomplish that.
Before you move on, I just want to highlight a point. The significance of including a new word, translation and interpretation services, it might be surprising to the board to learn that we do not have set aside an organization-wide budget for language access, nor did we have a consistent approach to language access throughout organization. So we've addressed the operational administration or delivery of language access services, and now we seek the budget to implement a consistent level of high-quality service throughout all parts of the bar. So I wanted to highlight that.
In my sense is, we're doing two important things here. One is that we're enhancing our ability to speak the languages that are predominant in California, which is the six, or eight, or 10 languages that show up most commonly in census data as department languages at home for Californians. But we've also got contract service that can speak the 232 languages that people do business in L.A. Superior Court in every day.
This next slide is an overview of the budget. I'm not going to go into this specifically, but it does show our revenues and expenses in the 2018 budget compared to the prior-year budget and compared to the projections that we have for the 2017 year. This next slide specifically shows the changes from the preliminary budget. So the first set of columns is the preliminary budget we've already seen. The second set of columns is the final budget that we are proposing now. And the variance, the last column is the variance column, or the changes since the preliminary budget. The biggest change is being in the general fund, and the next slide I will go through those changes with you specifically. But on this slide, I just want to highlight a couple of things. The Legislative Activities Fund, you'll see in the preliminary budget, had $221,000 of expenses, and in the final budget has $766,000 of expenses. So that is a ramp-up of expenses that allows us to break even in the Legislative Activities Fund and allows us to maximize the general fund for other purposes instead of augmenting this fund. Elimination of bias fund, you can see, had some significant changes in both revenues and expenses. That's because in the preliminary budget, we didn't know how the funding was going to be, and as you know, revenues opt-out, the decision was made to make opt-out fees at $2 in the elimination bias fund, so revenues are up. We brought expenses down solely to allow us to get back into compliance with the board's policy for the minimum reserve policy for that fund. So next, I'd like to go through the significant changes. These are not all the changes, but these are the biggest changes from the preliminary budget to the final budget. So the first column is the general fund, the other column is all the other funds combined. So you can see the biggest changes are in the general fund. The first item is the opt-out option for elimination bias. So the general fund loses revenue, but then gets reprogrammed at a lower level to the elimination bias fund, a lower level because some attorneys in fact do opt-out. Increased capital improvements. So originally, we budgeted $2 million, as I said, for the Howard Street deferred maintenance and improvements. We've added now two more million, so we've got four million budgeted now. The admissions information system was not budgeted in the preliminary budget, and so that is now budgeted at $2.5 million, with $1 million coming from the admissions fund and $1.5 million coming from the admissions fund and the legal specialization fund. Personnel costs, we've implemented the changes as a result of the collective bargaining economic package, and so there's some additional costs that were incurred that are showing here, and a few technical adjustments to estimates in here as well. Number five, IT projects. We've got several IT projects, the biggest of which are network infrastructure improvements and imaging capability that is in here in the $600,000 that was not in the original preliminary budget. We've got some more information that allows us to estimate better the contribution for post-retirement healthcare, so that's number six. Number seven, we basically reprogrammed expenses out of the legal specialization fund in order to reprogram it for its participation in the admissions management information management system. So you'll see up on line three, there's a negative 1.5 million, here there's a positive 1.2 million, it's mostly reprogrammed. MCLE content, this was a new item since the preliminary budget, so e-learning capabilities. The legislative activities expenses were not budgeted in the preliminary budget and now are included here. We reallocated all these different changes that we made and caused us to need to reallocate expenses in the, so line 10 is the reallocation of those expenses. Admissions, we changed both revenues and expenses because since the exam, the pass rate cutoff changed, the number of test takers is presumed to go up, and the expenses from the change to the two-eight-day exam is expected to go down, so there's had an increase in the admissions fund. And then there were some miscellaneous things that are included there in the final line 12. So that's an overview of the biggest impacts since you saw the preliminary budget.
Kevin, I just want to make sure to call the board's attention to that item, MCLE content development. So you've heard quite a bit about our 10 hours, and the board did approve funding for the new entry 10-hour MCLE last year. This $200,000 will provide funding for a couple of things. One, to further augment or enhance the 10 hours. It is being launched February 1st, but the developers, as well as our staff team, felt that was a very aggressive schedule, and there's some additional enhancements that they'd like to do. But in addition, there is funding to develop another e-learning module on the rules of professional conduct. So when the new rules come out, we will be able to develop a e-learning tool for them as related to the new rules, and Randy's office has been tasked with developing a comprehensive e-learning module on the rules in their entirety. And that will be used in the first instance to satisfy a requirement for those on probation. Currently, they have to certify, self-certify that they've read the entirety of the rules while they're on probation. Now we will be able to direct them to an online course where we can document progress, completion, as well as comprehension through testing. So that's what that $200,000 is given.
This slide shows how we expect to stand in terms of each fund meeting the board's policy of having a minimum of 17% or two months' worth of expenses in reserves. The board policy says a minimum of 17%, two months' worth, and that any fund that had greater than 30% in reserves for a period longer than six consecutive months, that there would be a proposal to address that over-reserve situation. So the 2018 projected reserves is in red. So if you look through there, you can see that the general fund, we are projected to drop down below the minimum reserve for the first time for the reasons that we've talked about, having these additional expenses mostly related to IT projects and deferred maintenance of building projects. If you look at across the rest of the way, there are no other funds that are below the 17%, projected to be below the 17%. There are several funds that are above the 30%, specifically the Client Security Fund and the Lawyer's Assistance Program Fund are significantly over that. And so for those, staff intends to bring a proposal to you to address that situation in the near future. There are two other funds that are currently a little bit over that 30%, the Legal Services Trust Fund and the Legislative Activities Fund. So we will monitor those, and if those stay above the 30% for the six consecutive months, then we would also bring that proposal to you as well. So with that...
I have a question. On the Client Security Fund, it's been represented that that gets spent down every year, and that's why we can't fulfill as many claims. I guess I'm missing why there's this huge reserve there. Anybody care to comment on that?
Well, I think that we need to adjust the 2018 budget to increase the payouts for 2018. It's just in honor of what has been the budget payout level. We reverted back to the pre, I guess, 2017 level, just automatically when we prepared this budget, and it's just an extra of the last thing, because we are really looking at the fund balance issue that we saw that, wow, it's over the 17% floor. So we will have to do an increase in payouts. In actual dollars, we're not talking about a sizable amount of dollars, but we should get it down to the 17% floor.
Are there other questions, Mr. Hartman? May I have a motion? Public. Is there a second? Is there a discussion from the board? Is there a discussion from the public? Because we're going into a dialogue about our finances with the legislature, I just want to emphasize a few things. Just want to thank our staff for the comprehensive work that they've done and the comprehensive presentation that they, we do better and better each year in our communication to the board of our financial information. I think although we're engaging in deficit spending this year, we're doing it for the right reasons. We're going to be fair to our employees. We're going to continue to invest in OCTC to ramp up our ability to protect Californians. We're investing in essential technical and capital one-time expenditures. We are going on reserves, and we can't keep this up, and we need an important dialogue with the legislature about what they hope for us to accomplish and what it's going to take for us to do that. May I substitute the roll call? Matter is approved. That takes us to the admissions information management system, which I assume we'll soon be called the AIMS.
Good afternoon. I'm Keith Jenkins. I manage the procurement unit in the Office of General Services.
Close to the mic, please.
Hello, I'm Amy Nunez, Inner Director of the Office of Admissions.
This item presents proposed contracts for a new admissions information management system, or AIMS, on the Salesforce platform. Now, the agenda memo and business case that was sent to you in advance totals 53 pages and explains everything in great detail. Amy and I plan to spend about 10 minutes going over a high-level overview of the system and the proposals, or, excuse me, our evaluation and selection process, and then we'll open it up to questions and discussion. To provide some background, the State Bar engaged consultants in 2005, 2006 to explore the needs of admissions and to recommend a new admissions IT solution. A separate consultant worked with admissions and IT in 2015 and 2016 to create a thorough concept of operations document detailing processes and workflows throughout the office. This is approximately 250 pages, which we'll pass around for your inspection. We issued a request for proposal in February 2017, received proposals in April 2017, and it has now been a nine-month review and evaluation process. Now, this is an overview of that process, so there's quite a lot here, and we'll try to state the high points of it. Moving from top to bottom, we received five proposals, four based on the Salesforce platform highlighted in blue, and another based on the ILG proprietary system highlighted in orange. We eliminated two vendors in a first-round cut based on responsiveness, agreement to our legal terms, and cost. These were the most and least expensive on the far end. The remaining three in the middle, ILG, Servio, and SLAL, underwent a lengthy and comprehensive evaluation process, including in-depth review of all technical, functional, and cost aspects of their proposals, whole-day demonstrations using a substantive script developed by staff, which we will also pass around, and a reference checks and a best-in-final offer process designed to provide exact functionality for an exact price. This resulted in the elimination of another Salesforce vendor. We then held another round of demonstrations and discussions with these stakeholders, which Amy will speak to in a moment. This lengthy process culminated in final scoring and selection of SLAL as the highest score bidder.
For the Office of Admissions, stakeholders included staff representing all of the functions in the Office of Admissions, as well as members from the Committee of Bar Designers, members from the California Board of Legal Specialization, and IT liaison from the Board of Trustees.
The solutions we evaluated represented two very different models of achieving the same functionality. The 2005 and 2006 reports recommended that a commercial off-the-shelf or COTS system be used in the office. These recommendations, these were recommended as out-of-the-box solutions capable of fulfilling admissions-specific needs. ILG's proposed Electronic Bar Admission Solution, or E-BASS, is intended to be a COTS, but it would require 32% of the system custom-developed to meet AIMS' needs. Due to this need, staff determined that E-BASS is not a true COTS as conceived and recommended in the consultant reports. SLAL's proposed solution, or SLAL's proposed Salesforce solution, is a platform as a service or PaaS. It is designed to be adapted, modified, and extended to new areas as business needs evolve. The PaaS model is now considered to be state-of-the-art.
This table depicts each of the admissions areas and the proportion of functionality that would require either configuration or development. And the estimates are derived from the proposals bidded by each vendor. So keep in mind that configuration means that the function can be achieved within the platform, while development refers to the notion that some level of programming code is required to create that function. To illustrate here, as you can see, 70% of, ILG would require 70% configuration for the administration portion of AIMS, while SLAL would require 89%. From a client perspective, configuration is a more efficient, easier to modify or expand, and is more secure for future support. On the other spectrum, customized development is more intensive and requires more resources. Given that ILG is a commercial off-the-shelf product for admissions, we anticipate... Given that ILG is a commercial off-the-shelf product for admissions, we anticipate the configuration would be close to 100% for each admission function. However, given that California State Bar is, is unique in its operation, the system will require development in each of our areas. A great example of that is looking at legal specialization, which is, which is not found in other State Bars. So ILG will have to develop that system from scratch. While that cell there should say 0%, ILG plans to borrow from functions applied for both administration, exam development, grading, to develop that component for legal specialization, hence the 58%. Essentially, while ILG is a COTS product, it still requires custom development more than Salesforce product does.
Why did he not put 200?
Because there's a little asterisk there. There is an integration portion that accounts for the difference.
Great, thanks. Moving on to the costs, moving on to the proposed solutions. Much better, thank you. Our evaluation typically accounted five-year costs of each of the vendors. Solom is approximately $1.6 million more than ILG, however, this is due entirely to the year-one implementation costs, while annual licensing costs are comparable. With either solution, staff estimate, staff estimate ongoing savings from software and personnel costs. Between admissions and IT, we estimate approximately $1.7 million in savings over the initial five-year term, and savings continuing into the future. The evaluation process also included consideration of risks associated with the vendors and proposed solutions. For ILG, we found their financial position to be weak, and their long-term viability is a concern to the evaluation team. Notably, their financial statements show negative net income, liabilities exceeding assets, and only $30,000 of cash on hand. Their financial statements were not certified by CPA, and while they have proposed absorbing any unexpected development costs, their ability to absorb these costs, deliver the proposed product, and state of flows is in question. Their software security is also a big concern, as their platform was subject to a security breach in May 2017 due to the open-source components that are integral to their platform design, although no doubt it was compromised. Regarding the risk and long-term viability of Solom and Salesforce, Solom's financial position is strong, but less relevant as they will only be engaged for that year-one implementation, and Salesforce then providing all ongoing support into the future. Salesforce's financial position is strong. They are a leader in the cloud market sector and a multi-billion dollar company that publishes quarterly statements. Salesforce's security is also strong. They host all government plants in separate, discreet government environments that meet federal security requirements. Finally, although this evaluation process was focused on a new system for admissions, we did need to keep in mind how our decision fit into the larger context of the State Bar's IT strategic plan, as we have other big technology projects underway or planned in the near future. With either solution, while either solution can provide a satisfactory admissions information management system, we found that Salesforce is better aligned with the State Bar's long-term strategic goals. Specifically, Salesforce's platform has greater capability of being integrated with other updated State Bar systems, these being the Tyler Case Management System and the Oracle Enterprise Resource Planning System. Further, the State Bar can leverage the AIMS Salesforce platform for future projects, in particular the licensing information management system. Due to considerations presented today and elaborated on in the business case, staff now recommend contracting with Solom and Salesforce for the AIMS contract. And lastly, we would like to, we would like to end by acknowledging the longness of people who played a significant role in preparing the initial RFP solicitation and in evaluating the proposals over these nine months. Thank you.
May I have a motion? Is there a second? Is there a discussion from the public? May I substitute the roll call?
I just want to take a moment to observe, this is the culmination of an awful lot of work. This is an important moment in the life of the bar. We've been talking about getting here my entire tenure on this board, and I'm very grateful for the work you've done. Congratulations.
The board, that one of the reports keeps getting handed out, and some of the powerful stuff has been at least 13 years in the making, and I, I think you see a pattern here where we are taking reports off the shelves and actually getting things done. So hopefully, it won't continue to take 13 years, but...
At some point, you're not working from a table, you know, for a long time.
Thank you.
Can I take just a fingerprint? And if we could have our time to come forward on our items?
We've seen this item in a number of different iterations in previous meetings. Today, we've combined two items in the interest of remedy. The two items are the rule for public comment on this requirement regarding fingerprinting, which Suzanne is going to discuss, and then the operational planning to implement the rule when it is passed, and I'm going to discuss that.
Hello, everyone. For those that don't know me, I'm Suzanne Grant from the Office of General Counsel.
Go microphone.
Oh, sorry. Is this...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Suzanne Grant from the Office of General Counsel. So, on November 3rd, the board authorized a 45-day public comment period for a proposed rule of court regarding the fingerprinting of active licensed attorneys. And we got a tremendous response to that. We posted it on the State Bar's website, State Bar's Facebook page, and Twitter account, as well as sending two emails to all attorneys. So, we got about 2,600 comments back. Staff read them, and we've outlined the comments in two categories for you. It's in the agenda item. Two big points I want to note is that primarily, we don't have an exact number because it was impossible to tell from all the comments, but I would estimate probably about 90% of the comments were from attorneys. So obviously, these, these are the people that were very much interested in this, in this requirement, and they had a lot to say about it. And it also, I wanted to note that there was a general reflection of not quite a, a deep understanding of why this rule was necessary. A lot of people said, you know, why can't you just use the fingerprints I already have? A lot of people didn't understand why it was necessary at this point. They thought it was kind of, you know, silly, there was no reason to do it. So it was clear, you know, they hadn't really read the materials, which, you know, I can't really blame them for not having read the, kind of, the detailed background of this. And a lot of people, you know, just generally thought that it would be a burden, some time-consuming, things like that. So, we have put this, this chart together that reflects the, the main categories, comments, as well as our response. And then, based on the comments as well as internal discussion with staff, we have recommended certain amendments to the rule, which are included in your attachments one and two. One thing I do want to note that I had, that, that we had since discussed, since this agenda item was posted, was also adding in something to address the special admissions categories. So, I can discuss that in a little more detail, is that we, we actually wanted to make the rule apply to re-fingerprinting of certain special admissions that have to go through a moral character requirement, and that's not in the rule before you. So, as part of the resolution, we would ask the board to also delegate to staff, including language, to have these three special admissions categories that require fingerprinting as part of the moral character application to also be required to be re-fingerprinted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about any comments you might have. The full text of all the comments are actually on the website, so if you do want to see the actual public comments, text themselves are in a chart, all 2,600 of them.
And Suzanne, how would you characterize, just for the board, the amendments that we are proposing?
Sure.
In addition to the, to the latest one on special admissions?
Okay, so we, we, the first one we, we did was make the language a little clearer that this was a requirement that attorneys had to be fingerprinted, as opposed to submit the fingerprints to the DOJ, because for attorneys that live out of state or in another country, they can't submit them directly to the DOJ, they have to use a fingerprint card. So we wanted to make that clearer. And that was actually answered a lot of people's questions. It was a tremendous amount of people said, you know, I'm out of state, I don't know how I'm going to do this. We also, in the, in the same vein, we added a provision for attorneys that are in a country, another country, and they cannot be fingerprinted. We now have a provision that they can go to my State Bar profile and notify the bar if they're not able to be fingerprinted, and they will have to be fingerprinted once they're back in the United States. We also, we also made it so that the Board of Trustees will develop a policy about the fee waivers, because I think we need some more discussion about the budget and which groups of people who are getting fee waivers will, who are getting fee waivers for member dues, will also be get fee waivers for the fingerprinting. And we added a section for attorneys who are physically unable to be fingerprinted, so this would deal with people who either don't have hands or who cannot somehow be fingerprinted. So we wanted a process where they could submit notification to the bar that they are unable to be fingerprinted and get an exemption. And the DOJ also currently has processes if they are unable to read the fingerprints. I think they, they can either ask for them again, or then they can just decide, we're unable to process these at all, and that person will be deemed to have, have complied with the rule. They will notify us and say, you know, these fingerprints just can't be run. I think those were the major changes. The, the main purpose of the rule, which is to require the re-fingerprinting on a schedule adopted by the Board of Trustees by December 2019, is still there, as well as the payment of those fingerprinting fees by the licensed attorney that is also still in the rule. Although I will say, because we have to, we are maintaining the rule, the resolution does recommend it to offer public comment again for a 30-day period. So there is, obviously, if it doesn't go back to the court, we'll have to maybe push back to December 2019 to take into account the fact we're, you know, now, now getting further out to give attorneys enough time to comply.
Another modification that I might want to highlight has to do with the privacy.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, yeah. Yes, we also made a provision just stating that information obtained by the State Bar shall be confidential and shall be used solely for the State Bar. So this can all lay people's concerns that the information will be shared either with the federal government or to other entities. So we wanted to give that protection that that information shall solely be kept within the bar for licensing purposes or regulatory purposes.
I wanted to thank you. You know, I have, thank you in person, you know, one-on-one, but the way you put together the agenda item where you, you kind of put together the different types of comments and then the response to it was so helpful, because I got anyone here on the board wanting to read through all of those, and I appreciate you for doing so, but it was really, really a nice presentation of the agenda item. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And I would move the item with the proposed suggestion that we're giving staff authority to address the other rules of special admissions.
Second, is there further discussion from the board? Is there discussion from the audience? The item is approved.
Good job.
Thank you. I think we're going to hear from Doug Risen on our...
Please. So my part of the, my part of the report doesn't include a recommendation, it's just a...
Mike.
It's Mike.
Yeah, Mike. Good job.
My part of the report doesn't include a recommendation, it's just an update on what we've been doing internally by coordinating to plan for the receipt of somewhere around 180,000, 190,000 fingerprints from active licensed attorneys in California. And if we're going to do that by the deadline that was established with the Board of Trustees, that would be by December 1st of 2019. So, the timeframe is relatively short. But let me talk first about the multidivisional team that's been working on this, and then a little bit about the proposed timeframe. So, internally, we've been working since August. It was a smallish group that began with Suzanne and myself, working on the issue, and we brought in IT, and then we realized that we had a whole lot of other tentacles to this particular project, and so we brought in a, a much larger group that's been meeting to work on it. So, Office of the Chief Trial Counsel, State Bar Court, Office of Probation, Attorney Regulation and Consumer Resources, Office of Admissions, and our IT team have all been a part of a, a multidivisional effort to prepare for how we're going to manage this process. Office of Research and Institutional Accountability has been doing the project management on this particular project. I have to give a shout-out to our IT team. They have really carried the project to this point, and I think that because of the work that they've done, we're very far along and we're very well-prepared, I think, to start receiving fingerprints once we set the requirement in place. IT has developed a secure data communication channel with the Department of Justice, and importantly, a separate secure channel from our Office of Admissions. This was a really important step early on, was that we not have admissions applicants' fingerprints and background checks coming through the same channel that active licensed attorneys' fingerprints are coming in, or we would have chaos in our offices. So we established, cleaned out these, the channels so that we had two very separate channels, they're secure channels, and the Information Systems Division, IT Division, also established an interface, which allows us to review Department of Justice records electronically and interfaces with the AS400 on the backend so that we get information on our applicants, and in the future, we'll get the information, our own information on licensed attorneys, so that we can compare that information side-by-side on the same screen. So they've, they've already created this, this huge potential efficiency in terms of our review of what we get from Department of Justice electronically, our ability to match that information, and our ability to then put the information into the database without having to deal with manual processes. My, my understanding, and for the Office of Admissions, who's already able to take advantage of this, is that it's already established a, a much more efficient process in the Office of Admissions for reviewing background checks that come in on applicants. So, the other thing I need to say, just by way of the work that we've been doing, and then I'll talk about the schedule, is that we just recently hired our project manager in the Office of Research and Institutional Accountability, the woman who will be leading this project. I'm super excited that she joined us for the last two weeks. She's been reading from the proverbial fire hose. She's here today, I just want to introduce you, Carolina Albarante, who is in the audience. And in my new role, I will still be over the Office of Research and Institutional Accountability, but at a, another step removed, so I'll be stepping back a little bit, but I expect to be involved in this project still. So the final thing I wanted to mention in terms of the report on the planning for this is the, the proposed schedule. We don't know exactly when the rule will be finalized and when attorneys will be, start being required to have their fingerprints taken. What we proposed in the, and what we've discussed among ourselves and our team, what we proposed is having a single compliance period. We, we proposed this partly because we simply don't have the time to, to phase this in with separate groups of attorneys. We at one point discussed the possibility of doing it in the same batch of MCLD compliant groups, and we just don't have the time to do that with the limited time available to us. So what we're proposing, though, is that we establish a single compliance period, followed by a warning period, and then followed by graduated sanction, monetary penalty of some kind, which would kick in initially at a relatively low level, something to make sure that people's attention has been gotten, and then a slightly higher penalty that would follow that, followed by placing attorneys who were non-compliant as of December 1st of 2019 on involuntary inactive status. So that's the high-level overview that we've been doing today.
Questions or comments from the board?
Have you talked yet about how you're going to communicate the rule to all the attorneys out there so they know when to start doing this?
We have spoken about that, so we have our various different channels of communication. The, the Eno blasts that we send out to all licensed attorneys, these are one of our principal forks of communication, so we would be sending out Eno blasts, and we have, that would be the principal means of communication, but we would also be posting information on the My State Bar profile. This is one of the elements of the IT work that remains to be done, is to, to develop the interfaces that will then start posting information on the My State Bar, Court, My State Bar profile, and allow for attorneys to see the glance when they go to their profile, whether we have records that show that they're compliant, or if not, show that they're not compliant, and also provide them with information that they would need to get into compliance. So pushing out some of the documents that they will need to, to fill out the Life Scan Form in particular, has certain codes that should be embedded in it to identify that person as a licensed attorney, so that their records come to us.
Woe be to those people who do not read their email from the State Bar.
Well, I, this is something I haven't even had a chance to talk about with staff, but somebody, and I can't remember who, suggested to me, and I think this is something we should do, that we provide an FAQ to attorneys to remind them what their self-reporting requirements are, encourage them to proactively self-report before this requirement goes into effect. A, a comment was made to me that this individual said, you know, you pass the bar, and you start practicing, nobody really sits down with you and goes over what it is you're supposed to report, and when, and to who. And so, this particular individual said she had no idea, until she started getting emails from us, that there was a reporting requirement at all. So, I think that is one of the first... So, I think that is one of the first pieces of proactive communication that we should consider doing. I did also want to make sure the Board saw, just briefly, attachment five, the very last page of this agenda item. This is the draft of the decision rules that Oria and Ozetisi have been working on with respect to what's going to happen with the hit information that comes back. So, just wanted to make sure the Board knows that this is obviously, this is something that we're doing, we're looking at. We understand that these rules need to be drafted, and we want to be public and transparent about them once they are finalized. This is an initial draft at this point.
I just wanted to also add one thing with the MyStateBar profile. One of the also changes in the rule was adding the fact that the attorney will be able to see if they need to get re-fingerprinted on the MyStateBar profile, because there is a small number, about 1,500 attorneys now, who fingerprints have been submitted based on the fact we had their fingerprint cards. So, that was a question we got a lot of, also, in public comments, because they noticed, "Oh, it says here that some people don't need to do it. How do I know if I need to or not?" And so, we can find that out in the MyStateBar profile.
Yeah, I hope the press will pick up on that last page, because I think there's a new story there that can start the process of educating the lawyers that we regulate. I'd like to just comment, in some ways, this item is a black eye for the bar, because it highlights a statutory duty that we simply ignored for too long. But I also view it as a real accomplishment of our new management team, that they identified this failure, owned it, and fixed it. I think that we can expect more of this. We can't ignore that. It's always the case that when strong management follows weak management, initially, all the news is bad. And so, I think we can anticipate other things like this, and we will step up to those and fix those, too. And so, I'm proud of our team for this accomplishment. What I would say to my fellow attorneys who are unhappy about all of this, two things. There is no source of funding for this, other than the profession. To say that the State Bar should pay this is simply to say that we should use your existing fees to do this, which if we could do, we would. But the society is not going to pay the cost of regulating lawyers. The society has other priorities. They're going to require lawyers to pay the cost of regulating lawyers in one way or the other. The other thing I would say to lawyers who participated in the process of commenting on these rules is thank you. 2,400 of you took the time to share a piece of your mind with us on this subject, and the rule is better before, for those comments. If those comments didn't make a difference, we wouldn't be sending this out for comment again. They did make a difference. It's a better rule, and I want to appreciate those who took the time to comment. With that, I think we're ready to move to our next item. Thank you. That takes us to the exception to the CalFORD's 180-day wait period to appoint retired and new attorneys. Mr. Harper.
Yes, Christine Wong, as you all know, our finance director, left us on January 2nd, retired. That is a particularly troublesome time for us, as it's the beginning of our annual close of the financial records and the beginning of the annual financial statement audit as well. So, we are asking the Board's permission to contract with her for answering questions and taking on projects over the course of the next three or four months.
The reason for this action is both because our policy requires it, and essentially because PERS requires it. PERS does not want people to retire and then keep earning money in a position that might be contributing to PERS's funds because they need the money. So, this is a PERS standard practice across local government that requires the legislative office to say, "Yes, this is the exception we need." The bar has a typically statutory framework for getting our year-end audits done. It's a compressed period that relates to the legislative calendar more than it relates to our fiscal cycle. And so, this is exactly the wrong time to lose as much institutional memory as Christine has to offer. So, I think this is very much in the interest of the bar. I would invite a motion.
So. Is there a second? Second. Is there discussion? Is there discussion from the audience? The item is approved. And now, something more positive.
Hello. I'm Desti Overpeck. It's actually the Productive Mindset Intervention. This is an opportunity for the State Bar to participate in the Productive Mindset Intervention with the goal of improving bar examination performance in the July 2018 bar exam. It is designed to improve the results for all bar takers, but including ethnic and racial minorities. We are requesting that the Board of Trustees will allow the State Bar to enter into a non-financial memorandum of understanding with the individual researchers who are doing the intervention, and the State Bar will help evaluate the effectiveness of the intervention. The Productive Mindset Intervention researchers have presented this design to the Board of Trustees, to the Committee of Bar Examiners, to the Law School Assembly over the past year. Previous interventions at colleges have resulted in increased GPAs, again, particularly for these socially and economically disadvantaged students. So, the terms of the MOU are summarized in the agenda item. I'm going to highlight three of the issues, but feel free to ask me about any that you're interested in. The first is data confidentiality. In order to protect the participants' bar scores, which are necessary for this research to determine if it's been effective, the data matching and merging will be done in-house by State Bar researchers. The data received from the Positive Mindset Intervention researchers will be intervention-related data, which is an initial psychological assessment, which includes the participants' stress levels, their law schools, and some of their demographic information, and information that the Productive Mindset researchers have gathered about how much time the subjects who participated spent on the various interventions. The State Bar will then match that data to the bar scores and then merge the data to create a data set. The data set will be de-identified, and any publicly released analysis will conform to the various privacy standards that we are required to follow. The next term has to do with the fact that we would not be having any clauses for identification or insurance requirements from the researchers. This is because they're individual researchers. We're not contracting with a research entity. However, keep in mind that the study participants will be required to sign a consent waiver that the State Bar will help draft. The researchers have not had, ever had any subjects complain in the past or bring any kinds of claims. And again, the analysis and the data matching will all be done in-house. And then, my third point is that the State Bar would be agreeing to preserve the data for a 10-year period following the study. This is to comply with the requirements of IIB and the American Psychological Association guidelines. If there were some kind of an audit of the research, the State Bar would transform and de-identify any scores. So, in closing, this is an opportunity for the State Bar to participate in the Productive Mindset Intervention with the goal of improving the performance on the July 2018 bar exam. If successful, the goal here is for each law school to be able to offer the intervention directly to its students.
And I just wanted to add, just to make sure the Board has the context, this initiative really stems from the Board's adoption of its reserve policy in March of 2016. At that time, the Elimination of Bias Fund had a sizable reserve balance, and in directing the spend on that fund to comply with the reserve policy, the Board specifically directed the Council on Access Fairness to advance the bar path initiative. And fast forward, after a significant research, this is the initiative that was identified. So, just wanted to make sure that was very clear. This is where that action stems from, and we are now moving forward in my understanding.
May I have a motion? Go ahead, Mark. I'll move. Doris made the motion, and Todd has seconded it. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I have a question and then a comment. A question, it's not clear to me, is this just for the July 2018 exam? When will this be carried out? Just for the warning.
The intervention is for the July 2018 bar exam. When we put up on our webpage, you know, the application for the bar exam, there will be a link saying that if you are interested in participating in this intervention, click here. That's one of the things the State Bar would be doing. And then, it takes it to the other researchers' page, where they will tell them how to participate in the interventions, assign them to control groups, or whatever. And in March, the researchers would start giving the interventions for that July exam, and then after the results come out, they'll analyze what the results are.
When do we think we will have results back from the researchers?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Just curious. And then, the only other, the comment I had is on, this is a very small point, on the consent waiver.
Yes.
The language in the item, which I don't need to amend, but it says the State Bar will help graphic. I mean, I think it's obviously subject to bar approvals or general health laws, has to be set aside and provide sufficient protection to us.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Do you know if we would have the results back in time for February? Or it'd be nice to know. Are we going to do it again in February if we don't know?
So, I think this is a one-time intervention to see whether it will work in this situation. I don't think the intention is that we would continue to do it after that. I think then the idea is we turn it over to law schools or other entities to say, "Hey, this is great for our students. Please let's get them signed up and do this kind of thing."
So, more of a pilot, right?
Yeah, but we can certainly find out. Leah, do you know how soon they expected the analysis to be completed? I can't remember that part.
No, but I mean, it can't be completed, at least until the exams are scored.
Probably by the February.
If we know by to do this again in February, 2019.
I'm sure, I'm sure we would. Well, I'm saying I'm sure. I said so.
She's going to pause that one.
That's a productive kind of pause.
Okay, that was fine.
Is there more discussion on the items?
I think it's going on that.
In which case, may I, we have a motion and second. May I substitute the roll call? The item is approved. Thank you. That takes us to the last item on our open session agenda. We'll be returning to closed session to be entertained by Mr. Reader, who's been patiently waiting. So, I think Leah is reporting on the items. Back to the strategic plan.
Yeah.
It's New CalFORD.
I don't, go ahead. I think we, this is open forum for reflections on or to hear any follow-up if needed, we can certainly say when our next steps are.
Yeah, and I think part of why we put this on the agenda also was, in case there was any wrap-up that we needed to do, thinking that we would be writing some of the objectives during the earlier sessions, and if we needed to finish some of those. Since we've taken a different path during that, we don't need to use this time for that. The, our takeaway is that for the February video conference meetings with the Board of Trustees, I will be gathering all of my notes from the sessions, your type notes, Sarah's notes, Leah's notes, and compiling the, what sounded like additional provisions to the objectives and additional objectives to be, including the best strategic plan. I will be compiling what may be action items under some of those objectives and presenting them to you, for you to see the whole panoply of suggestions we came up with. I will propose some timelines for those, and then you can delete them for now, you can change timelines, you can suggest they get added to future strategic plans, but it'll sort of be a good way to compile all of the information for the next phase.
Darna, I have a question. Let me see if that's all done by Sunday. I appreciate that. Do you think it would make sense to have an agenda item in March brief, where we came back and revisited this and made some final decisions? Because February is going to be a lot, it's just a lot of information. Would we want to revisit it in March, like a 10-minute agenda item?
Probably, but specifically to access.
Yeah, we have to prioritize the access items. And I told Leah during our break yesterday, that it seems productive, we might devote an hour of our day and a half to the end in March to sorting out that prioritization, maybe with paper, blue stickers, or whatever it takes, to achieve consensus about what our priorities are, because we certainly can't do them all.
I've heard lawyers like gold stars.
Yes. Is there more discussion on the items?
I'm not sure that I heard this correctly. You really take the various items we discussed and make a list of the ones that you think there were some momentum for making the factors. The ones that you discard, well, we have a discard list, so we have something to refer to, something might say, "Do you ever want to talk about this and maybe bring it up?"
And that would be really disparting, many, because there are so many things that one person said, and it's not as if the idea was dismissed, we just moved on and somebody else added another topic. So, my idea would just be to compile all of those and not dispart any of them.
Okay, all right.
Okay, it's good for the discussion, but I'd like to take a five-minute break. We'll come back at, let's call it 20 minutes to 25 minutes to the hour, and that will allow folks who aren't staying in closed sessions to part, and those of us who are staying in closed session to...
I'm going to go try to get the turn.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So, we can be approaching the...